Okay, my call to order the Wilsonville City Council Work Session on Monday, June 5th, 2023 at 5:02 PM. And first, is there any review of agenda or agenda items or consent items? Looking around, not seeing anything. Okay. Or do we have any councilor concerns tonight? No. Then we will go ahead and jump in. Our first item, I believe, is the Frog Pond East and South Development Code. And we have a staff presentation here from Mr. Dan Pauly.
Good evening. And Dan Pauly, Planning Manager. Give me a moment to start the show here. All right. So really, for this edition of Frog Pond Development Code, we're really revisiting some of what we didn't quite get through, started in April but didn't quite get through and had, and council expressed a desire to have some more conversation about. And that really, and then we have, and that really is around multifamily housing and changing standards related to the design standards and review process for multifamily housing. The other item we didn't get to in April that I'd like to discuss with the council tonight as well is, is some changes to the allowance of accessory dwelling units. So both of these items have been identified through the master planning process of something that can be done to provide more housing options in Wilsonville. So let's start with the multifamily. So what we did get through really last time was multifamily design standards. So there's two portions of multifamily that we'll discuss, the actual design standards and where they come from. It's kind of a review. But really, the focus of the multifamily discussion is the review process for this evening. So as discussed last time, multifamily design standards are really looking for something that's clear and objective, which we currently don't have. Currently, multifamily, for the most part, is reviewed similar to a commercial or industrial building where there's a lot of just kind of supposed to look nice essentially. Where all other housing types, including detached homes and middle housing, all have specific design standards. So what has been recommended by the Planning Commission and the, and the project team that we discussed last time, and I understood from this council that this was, was a good direction to be heading, is to adapt some standards from townhouses and other components from our middle housing standards adopted last, is it two years ago now, to apply those to multifamily because they're of similar size and bulk of buildings oftentimes. So that makes a lot of sense. While at the same time, however, parking and the way parking and site work for multifamily is different than townhouses generally. So adding some new specific standards in regards to that. And this is one of the standards that some of the same issues that really we need to address for the Frog Pond East and South Master Plan apply citywide. So the, the recommendation is to apply these same standards citywide. So some highlights of what's in these standards that we're talking about is orientation of the main entry, which really focuses on the pedestrian environment and keeps that focus. Minimum window coverage, which is a fairly common architectural standard. Facade articulation, that's something that's come up repeatedly as an important component of, of having a variety of design. And as we really surveyed, what, what really makes a residential structure attractive and interesting, but doesn't add a lot of cost necessarily, is facade articulation. There's also standards around pedestrian connectivity and making sure parking is to the rear or side or otherwise screened. So then the big change that, another big change that's being recommended is in how it's reviewed. So currently, multifamily, the architecture and of a multifamily building has to go through the Development Review Board. And as we discussed last time, this becomes kind of interesting because under statutes and state rules, the ability to review residential needed housing through is pretty limited. And so if someone proposes it, essentially, there's not much neighbors can say that if it's allowed under zoning. So that, that at times can be confusing to neighbors, saying, you're having this public hearing, but really, there's not much to say. So that process can, there's kind of a disconnect there that makes it difficult both for the neighbors as well as the DRB who understand on one hand, you know, their role that, okay, I have to be fair, I have to, you know, this isn't allowed use, I have to approve it, but then have a room full of angry neighbors that they're trying to, you know, address their concerns. It, it really can be an awkward situation for them. And in some ways, I would say is kind of a remnant of the, how, of an era when there weren't stringent state rules about approving residential uses. So something else we heard from the City Council and Planning Commission during the Frog Pond East and South Master Planning Process is differentiating between these smaller apartment buildings, which we don't have a lot of now. There's, there's a few examples in town, but are essentially are smaller and similar to size that maybe you'd even see in like a fourplex or, or middle housing essentially that really from a built form isn't that much different than middle housing versus larger buildings over six units, which, you know, the garden apartment style, which are larger, bulkier buildings than maybe that might have a different review process is really what came out of our discussion with Planning Commission. So what's been drafted is that for buildings, for these smaller buildings up to six units, consistent with how detached homes, single-family detached homes, as well as middle housing is approved, it would just be approved through administratively with the building permit. There'd be no notice to neighbors. And, but then if you have a larger building, which can have, architecturally have a kind of a more noticeable, I guess you would, kind of more, as is bulkier, where there is actually notice to neighbors and the public, and really to, to, a balanced approach where, where they're informed, but also understand the limits of, of the review. There's really specifically not whether there's an apartment there, but you know, what, making sure that all those standards that have been agreed upon by the, within the city are being met. So I, I think this, this slide is helpful to really understand what is changing because it doesn't, we're not saying that someone could come in and build a 500 apartment complex with six or seven buildings just by talking to planning staff. That's not what we're saying. We're really talking about the architectural design of buildings. So currently, DRB reviews everything. This includes the functional layout of the site, where the drive aisles, where the parking is, how you get access to it. It reviews any plat or land divisions, required, any parks or open space, and notably, the actual, the design of the buildings, as well as even the design of the shrubs around the base of the buildings and those details. Where for what's proposed, which is again, consistent with middle housing as well as, as detached single-family homes, is the functional layout, you know, where if there's streets or drives, where those are located, how the traffic circulation works, if there's any, any subdivision that's being divided, as well as continue to design of the required open space, because all residential development requires that 25% open space, half of which is required to be active open space, like professionally designed park space essentially. So then staff would, so essentially, you'd have a plat or kind of a plan of, that may indicate where, where buildings are going. But then when they come in for the actual construction of the building, the architecture, the final architecture and final, and design of the landscaping immediately around the building would go through review by staff, the same as other residential types. So I will pause there, happy to answer any questions, take any comments, and hope that I've made this a little bit clearer.
Thank you.
Please go ahead. So I, I'm not, it wasn't clear to me in the, in the document, and I'm sorry that I didn't ask you this in advance. Are the, when it discusses parking, is it, is it all street parking? There's no, on these multifamily units, there's no, there's no allowed parking either behind the unit?
No, it's saying that parking has to be behind the unit. So not, it's not between the building and the street, or it's otherwise screened. So, yeah.
But it also talks about minimum lot, it's the distance to lot line.
Of the building?
Yeah, I think, let me, let me see if I can find it again.
So really, as it regards to parking, I mean, parking's allowed, obviously, but it's, and we have similar standards even in some of our industrial zones and including our middle housing standards, where trying to encourage the parking, those kind of those functional parts that don't really add or contribute to the pedestrian environment to be either screened or to the side or behind. So really, the buildings can't have a presence on the street. Similar, like you'd see to the apartments in the Village Center or elsewhere, where it's not auto oriented, as some of the older garden apartments are, but really, there is some pedestrian oriented design.
So where in the, where in the document does it talk, I mean, it talks about off-street parking, which is on page three of seven. And is that, is that, that's the place where it would talk about that the parking would have to be behind the building?
Yeah. And I can share again, so in the packet from April, there's a lot more detail. I didn't bring that detail back since we kind of covered that a lot in April, and that wasn't, had to plan that to be the focus of this discussion tonight. So, but I can touch base with you otherwise and kind of send that to you and show you where those standards are.
Okay. Well, I have, I kept them all.
They talk about, okay.
I kept them all in.
Yeah, I'm all. So in the April packet, there's more, includes all the code and diagrams about how that parking behind would work.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Carol.
You go.
Okay. When I look at the proposed versus the current on the review process, can you tell me that with the proposed process, how does the, how does the public benefit from that change?
So there, first of all, it's clear what's actually open to public review, right? What, because I mean, functional layout, I mean, there are, you can't, still, it's an allowed use, but that's out of the purview of their review. And so, and not setting, not setting expectation that really the public has say about the architecture of a residential building. Because, I mean, we've had, and let me caveat saying, we've had those discussions, we've had public processes that say what is important to the community about design of residential buildings. And we've developed standards around that. But it's not designed by committee for every building as it comes forward.
Right. And that's, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah.
It may have been a bit of a leading question, because I just want to make sure that we have it on the record, that the, the proposed change is really more of a clarification of what the DRB can really input versus, and as you said earlier in your presentation, versus what they can, what they really can have influence and, and comment on.
Yeah.
So I, I had a question. Historically, on your buildings that were, let's say, five units, have you had much public comment or much concern? I'm thinking you probably haven't had very much.
I would, I mean, it's been a long time since we've had like a five-unit apartment building. The closest thing would be in the Vilbo Village Center with some of those condo buildings on Vilbo Drive near Barber. And those were actually reviewed more like this, where there was actually this standard set up in the master plan that they had to follow, rather than, you know, they weren't, they didn't come say, oh yeah, this looks nice, we think it looks nice. There was specific design standards that were set up for them in the Vilbo Master Plan. And, you know, there weren't a lot of comments, because at that point, there weren't a lot of neighbors out there either when those were approved. So.
And the other comment that I had is, I really like it when parking is behind a building. I just think that really enhances the sense of community.
Thank you.
For these, these standards, have we gotten feedback from, can you remind us if, if we've gotten feedback from developer builder community, talking about if this is clear to them? And if it's, like, something that they could navigate to as, as they're considering where to build and where to develop and bring a variety of housing types to a community? Because that's, I understand that's, we're trying to get a variety of housing types, and this is one way that we can, you know, get a variety of housing types, hopefully, right?
Which is, which is where this really originates from, because in East and South, really, a lot of the land out there, you can put any of the above. And we want to have a consistent process for any of the above, be it, you know, is it a detached home or, or a townhouse or multifamily want to have a consistent process. So we're not discouraging one or the other based on the review process. And so the developer that's been interested in Frog Pond and that has collaborated a lot with us on it, has seen these at the Planning Commission level and didn't raise any additional concerns. Obviously, less process, less being reviewed, more predictability are always things that developers tend to look at positively.
Right.
And also, I mean, making the process understandable from all parties and making sure that there's not unnecessary delay in getting the housing reviewed and ready for construction.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, the consistency for, as you said, for all parties, for the community members, for the builders or developers, for people that are looking at having a new home in the community as well, having that consistency so we can produce smoothly. That seems important. Comments from the Planning Commission that help shape what we're looking at tonight?
The biggest comment, I mean, overall, they, they like the approach of basing it and the consistency of basing it and having it similar and kind of the same language and style of regulation as applies to middle housing, made a lot of sense to them. Really, they're, because like some of you, most of the Planning Commission has experience on the Development Review Board and has seen some of these applications over the years. And so they had a good discussion and thought about the review process in particular, what is appropriate, you know, where. and thought about the review process in particular, what is appropriate, you know, where, where public notice is helpful and where it kind of is confusing or misleading. So that, really their input around that and their experience on DRB and as residents really helped inform that, that creation of both, kind of that tier of stage of class one review, which again is, is essentially is reviewed by staff and approved without notice, versus there is still some merit to having some of the larger bulkier buildings reviewed through a process, where there is public notice opportunity to comment, and part of that is making awareness, and so there's, there's expectations in that communication.
I just had another question, it was good to, has anything changed in these moving forward since the planning commission workshop?
No, the planning commission, so these are all consistent with what we discussed with the planning commission.
And it was good to see at the planning commission meeting that there was a developer there that did respond to, to these, these recommendations. So my question is, the DRB is, and I, and I think staff has also held to timelines for review, once, once an application is submitted, correct?
Correct.
And that would not change?
That would not change.
Okay.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Obviously, less, less process in terms of getting it ready for DRB, less time, so. So we can come back to this, I did want to, because we didn't quite get to it and we're short on time tonight, I did want to hit on the encouraging and integrating accessory dwelling units. This was identified even back as a condition of approval when Metro did the urban growth boundary expansion, of something they really wanted us to explore, and, I mean, Wilsonville has allowed ADUs pretty generously for years, I mean, there's a policy of waiving STCs since they're accessory to the primary dwelling, and we've allowed them pretty widely, and we've seen some uptake, not a lot. Recently, there's been more, then I think we've seen more approved in the last couple of years than we have ever, and so there's, there's growing interest in them, but still, as part of this, because of that, part of, actually, a specific part of the master plan was really to look at accessory dwelling units and the opportunity to provide both kind of stair-free or more mobility-friendly housing opportunities that are also more affordable. And also, another change we've done recently, so state, just, so state law doesn't allow us to require any parking for ADUs anyway, so our code already doesn't require any parking for ADUs, and that comes from House Bill 2001, the middle housing rules. Also, there's the Senate bill that we incorporated into our middle housing land, middle housing code that allows ADUs to actually be partitioned off, the land partitioned off and sold separately without necessarily meeting all the zoning setbacks, that allows kind of this creation of a unit of land that allows the transfer, so providing more ownership opportunities. So both from, from state, local, and the regional, the encouraging ADUs is, is something that can provide a lot of opportunities in a growth area like this. So we wanted to focus that, and again, similar to the multifamily, as we went through this, the changes that were recommended as it relates to Frog Pond East and South also makes sense So the big change is the allowance for ADUs in regards to townhouses. So historically, Wilsonville's allowed ADUs for detached homes, but we've also allowed what we used to call detached single, or attached single-family, for what we see a lot of in Charbonneau, where you have the, you know, single-family homes for all purposes, but they have a shared wall. And so what the code says currently is that we allow ADUs for townhouses only when the townhouse lot meets the minimum lot size for detached homes in the zone. So if you, so now if you have a townhouse that's like on a 1,200 square foot lot, let's say in Vilbo, you couldn't have an ADU, but if that townhouse is on a 2,500 square foot lot, which is the minimum lot size for a detached home, then you could have an ADU. That's how the code is written today. What this would do is allow ADUs for all townhouses, which are something that developers have expressed interest to, we've seen examples in this community and others where, for example, one common way that this is done is the ground floor is maybe a garage and an ADU, and then there's a full unit in the two upper stories of a three-story townhouse. The other is to remove additional review process for ADUs, currently the code requires an additional administrative review, even though it's the same process of the standard administrative review, it just adds an additional fee and review, which doesn't have much purpose, so we suggest removing that, so it's consistent with the review of other housing types. And also something that is coming out in even some draft state standards I've seen, but also something that is a barrier to adoption, is sometimes the primary dwelling will max out the lot coverage, the permitted amount of the lot that can be occupied by buildings, or is built to setbacks, so allowing some additional exceptions for lot coverage and setbacks would be a major step to remove barriers to, for them to be built on land that otherwise is really underutilized, but could accommodate a dwelling. So in addition to those citywide changes, in Frog Pond East and South, we're looking at actually the way we classify, and we'll get into more of this in details, but I just want to, in future work sessions, but I just wanted to touch on this tonight, that there's specific provisions to, in our variety requirements to encourage them, that they can be used to meet certain requirements around housing variety, that really encourages developers to integrate them in areas that are primarily detached homes in particular or townhouses. So I will leave it at that and happy to answer any questions.
So on the ADU, let's say they convert their garage, and now they're going to rent it out, what about if down the road, they want to convert that into a condo unit, so a different ownership, are we addressing that?
So that's, condos can be created as, as it stands today, someone could condoize that.
Okay.
There's some kind of state-level barriers that, that certain parties are working on, clarifying and potentially changing, but yeah, you could condo, either if it was a garage, or if it was like the bottom floor of a three-story townhouse, you could create a condo ownership situation.
Would that impact the parking standards?
That wouldn't impact parking standards.
You said would not.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do the rules of an HOA supersede the permit?
So existing HOAs are a separate private agreement that oftentimes are still valid, not always, but, but under, per, the 2019 House Bill 2001, new HOAs cannot limit type of, types of housing or ADUs. So new, new HOAs, we review it to make sure that language doesn't limit them, and so like in Frog Pond East and South, in particular, or even Frog Pond West, the HOAs cannot limit ADUs or middle housing.
In one of the standards, it says ADU review process is the same as for single-family units and middle housing.
Correct.
So if it's an ADU associated with a single family, is that what that means, that if it's associated with a single-family home, it has a different review process than if it is associated with middle housing?
Sorry, so, what that means is, so currently for both detached single-family homes and middle housing, what happens is, they submit a building permit to the building department, and then that's routed through planning, and they pay a fee as part of their building permit for planning to review it, to, you know, check setbacks and architecture and things like that, and so then that's routed through planning, we make sure it's consistent with the standards, we approve it, it goes back to the building division who then issues the building permit. Currently for ADUs, in addition to that, they have to come through a separate application to the planning division and pay an extra fee to do what, the class one review, which is the no-notice review, just as kind of, so it's, we're reviewing the same thing twice in a way, I mean, so what this, what is meant by that language is removing that separate application to the planning division, where it just goes through the building division, which then routes it to planning, as, as any other housing type.
Okay.
Does that help?
That helps.
Okay.
Thank you. I wonder, I think this ADU piece is important, especially as we've been talking about as a council, looking for ways to have opportunities for first-time home buyers and for people to be able to enter the housing market. And you mentioned that we haven't seen a lot of ADUs, but maybe that's changing. I wonder if, of course, it probably varies, you know, city to city, what, what will ultimately be, but I wonder if some of the neighboring cities that are like Tuolleton or Westland, are they, have you, do you know if they're seeing a big increase in ADUs, is there something, you know what I mean, is there something that, that we haven't done, that other cities are doing, or, or vice versa, that we could help support that product type within the city?
So I haven't heard that Westland or Tuolleton or Sherwood or any of those outer suburbs are having any more ADUs than we are.
Okay.
Tigard has taken some different approaches, which has produced some, I don't have the exact details with me tonight, and then Portland had some financial incentives and such that have produced more, so there's some financial-
They're kind of, they're a whole different ballgame, though, in a lot of ways.
And it's much more urban, and you'll hear developers say that, I mean, it's a different, you know, market when you're talking about the inner parts of a city. But in terms of removing, like, policy barriers or zoning barriers, I think we're about what, with these changes, what we've done, so anything else would probably have to be financial incentives, and also there's a component of, do you realize you can just put this in a backyard and sell it separately, and, you know, how, and, and probably some developers working through how they make that work with the detached home, where it's something that the detached home buyer also, you know, is, wouldn't be overly turned off by, that makes sense from a site design and layout component, aspect, because traditionally, they, I mean, it's really been thought of, okay, it's put in the backyard as an option, that's part of, that maybe you can rent out or have friend or family member live in, but to actually, where it's like built on the same lot on a corner but sold completely differently, is something developers really aren't used to yet and are still kind of working through how that may lay out in an actual subdivision.
Yeah.
So, and we're, we're working and having those conversations, so.
Okay, great. Well, thank you. It looks like we have asked all of our questions, so appreciate your presentation and the chance to give feedback.
Thank you.
Unless there's anything else, I think we're good for, for right now, thank you. And that'll bring us to our next item for the work session, which is Park System Development Charges Methodology Analysis.
Good evening, Council President Ockervall and members of the council, Chris Hammerman, Parks and Recreation Director, and as you mentioned, Council Ockervall, or Council President Ockervall, I'm here to talk about parks' STCs. So in, in, just as a bit of a background, before we go into a presentation, and I'll be joined virtually by members of FCS Group, the project team, but just in way of background, so in late 2022, we engaged with FCS Group to evaluate our parks' STCs. It had, it had been since 2008, it had been, 2008 was the last time that our STCs were, were updated, and since that time, the Park and Rec Comprehensive Plan, Master Plan, as well as site-specific plans for Memorial and Boone's Ferry Park have been completed. These planning efforts involved extensive community engagement that resulted in the formation of the current Parks and Trails Project List. This list, along with gross, growth estimates and current inventory data, were used to recalculate the park's SDC rates, so that contributions made by development can cover a fair share of the cost of existing and planned facilities that provide capacity to serve future users, in other words, growth. So I'm going to let, I'm going to turn the time over now to the FCS team and Tim Wood, the project manager, because they are the experts in the STCs, and they'll go into the nuts and bolts of how we, we got where we did, and, and then we'll be, the project team will be around, you know, obviously afterwards to collect feedback and answer questions, thank you.
Great.
Great, thanks, Chris. Hello, councilors, my name is Tim Wood, I am a project manager with FCS Group, with me is John Gellerucci, the principal in charge of this project, and Chris, is there, is Zach on at all? Zach Hazel?
Zach who?
Zach Hazel.
He's another member of the FCS team.
I was gonna ask him about Zach Weigel.
Oh, he, he-
Different Zach.
He declined to be promoted, according to-
Ah, I see, all right.
There he is.
Fair enough, okay, great. Great, well, with that, Zach Hazel was, is also a member of our team here this evening, so, again, thank you for your time, we'll, we'll jump into the presentation, I will share my screen, and we'll get going. All right, can you all see this?
Yes.
Yeah.
Great. Okay, well, we're here to, to talk tonight about the park's SDC analysis that we've been doing for the city of Wilsonville over the last few months. I'm going to give you a sense for what we're looking at with respect to the agenda this evening, we'll give you some background on SDC basics, how they're calculated, what they mean for the city, we'll review the current parks' SDCs that are being charged in Wilsonville, then we'll go into the results section where we talk about how we calculated your parks' SDC, the different components that went into that calculation, and then we'll, we'll give you a sense for what the calculated parks' SDCs are, are looking like going forward, we'll provide you with some comparisons to peer cities in the region, and then we'll talk next steps for what this project's going to look like moving forward. So key characteristics of SDCs are, are as follows, they're one-time charges and not ongoing rates on new developments, so we're talking exclusively about, about new developments in, in, in Wilsonville here. SDCs are available for five major utilities, water, wastewater, stormwater, transportation, and in the case of this evening's presentation, parks. SDCs are for capital only, both in their calculation and their use, so the, the things that we use to calculate what a park's SDC should be, is purely based on, on capital that the city's going to need to spend, which is another way of saying it won't go to maintenance. SDCs include both existing and future infrastructure cost components, and we'll get into what that looks like exactly, but essentially, there's, there's a component which can reimburse the city for capital already expended, and a component that will, that will accrue funds for future capital needs that the city will have. And finally, SDCs are for system facilities and not for local facilities, so in the case of a transportation SDC, for instance, the SDC could fund arterials, but not local streets. So there are the major components, and in fact, one of the best components of doing an SDC analysis in Oregon is the fact that the legal framework for SDCs is so well laid out in state statute, specifically ORS 223.297 through 316, which gives us just a really strong framework to move off of when we calculate SDCs. So to give you a 30,000-foot view of what, what goes into an SDC, there's, there's two major fee components, the reimbursement fee, which calculates the eligible value of unused capacity in existing facilities, so that would look like a park that isn't yet at capacity, has, has more capacity to meet future demand, and then an improvement fee, which is calculated based on new capital improvements- And then an improvement fee, which is calculated based on new capital improvements to meet future planned capacity needs. Once we assign a monetary value to both the reimbursement fee and the improvement fee, we divide them by the growth in system demand, which in the case of a parks SDC is population, net new population, and that makes up a system development charge per unit of demand, which again is, is in this case, per person. Your current parks SDCs are, are sort of, again, 30,000 foot view as follows. Typically, we, we compare SDCs using single-family detached dwellings as a unit of measure, so Wilsonville's current parks SDC for single-family detached is 7349 per dwelling unit. You can see here that multi-family dwelling is charged a little bit less, and that just reflects a slightly lower amount of demand on the system per unit. And then these other non-residential uses are charged as well, but you can see there on the far right column that they're charged based on building square footage, not per dwelling unit. So an office is charged $729 per 1,000 square foot of new developments to, again, help offset its impact on the parks system. And you can see you've got pretty much all of the other non-residential uses covered there, including food service, shopping centers, retail and industrial, so a pretty comprehensive list of land uses that are charged in Wilsonville for parks SDC. With that, I'm gonna turn it over to Zach, who did some, well, all of the, the difficult work on this project. Zach?
Thanks, Tim. All right, so starting with an overview of the full calculated SDC, we'll start here and then we'll look at all the details. So at the top of this table, you can see the cost basis section divided into improvement, reimbursement and compliance costs. Improvement and reimbursement are those two categories that Tim just talked about. And there's also some inclusion for compliance costs as well for 3.8 million. That gives us a total cost basis of 79.8 million, or 79.7 million for the full cost basis of the SDC. That's the numerator of the calculation. The denominator of the calculation is the growth in residential equivalents you see there in the second section, 8,626. So the cost basis divided by the growth in residential equivalents gives us the total SDC per residential equivalent, you can see a little ways down in bold, for up $9,242. Now, to actually charge this SDC to new developments, we would apply the average occupancy of different dwelling unit types to, to get the charge per dwelling unit. So for single-family, you can see there the calculated charge is $25,040. Now, important note is that this is the maximum calculated SDC, so there's no obligation to charge the full amount of 25,000. You can charge anything less than or equal to that, you just can't charge anything over that. And so for, for that purpose, the city staff has recommended a lower charge of $5,167 per residential equivalent, which results in an SDC for a single-family residence of $14,000. Okay, so we're gonna start by building the denominator of the SDC calculation, which is the growth in residential equivalents. And you might notice I'm using very strict word there, residential equivalents. That is because we are including both residential demand on the park system and non-residential demand on the park system, which arrives by employees who work inside Wilsonville or by people who work outside Wilsonville but live in Wilsonville. So we have to do a little bit of accounting to figure out how an additional employee in Wilsonville, Wilsonville differs from an additional resident in Wilsonville, how they have different impacts on the park system. So at the top here, we can see some census data, which lays out where the different workers of Wilsonville are. So we can see that, for example, if you work inside Wilsonville and you live inside Wilsonville, we have 1,600 of those such people. If you work inside Wilsonville and you live outside Wilsonville, we have 17,000 of such people. So we have a total of 19,000, just over 19,000 people who work inside Wilsonville. And we have a total of 24,000 people who live inside Wilsonville. And those groups intersect, of course. Then what we're gonna do is, you don't see all the math, math laid out in this table, but what we're, what we do is we apply different estimates of availability to each category of, of person. So for example, if you don't work and you live inside Wilsonville, then we assume you have the full 16 hours of every single day of a week available to use the park system. And just important note, that's available. It doesn't mean you actually will be there all 16 hours, it just means that it is available to you for those full 16 hours. If you work inside Wilsonville and you live outside Wilsonville, then we assume that you have availability in Wilsonville to use the park system about one hour per workday, you know, over a lunch period. And then if you live inside Wilsonville and you work inside Wilsonville, then you have both the non-residential demand of one hour per workday and all of your off-hours when you're after work or on the weekends to use the park system. So don't worry about all of the nitty gritty. What we, what we do is we multiply each group by the estimated hours of availability, and that gives us a total number of hours for residential uses and a total number of hours for non-residential uses, which you can see in the middle of that second table. Dividing by the number of residents and the number of employees gives us an hour, hours per resident and an hours per employee on average, and dividing those two together gives us the residents per employee that you see on the very bottom. So what that tells us, you can see there, that it, that one employee has the same impact of about .05 residents, you can see at the very bottom. Or in other words, it takes about 20 employees, new to Wilsonville, to equal the impact of one resident. Okay, so with that residential equivalency factor, we can now combine our population and our expected employees to get one residential equivalence calculation that we can use for the denominator of the SDC. So at the top here, you can see population as it's expected to grow between 2021 and 2036, and you can see employees as well, as they grow from 2021 to 2036. We take that .05 factor that we just calculated on the previous table, and we multiply that by the number of employees to get the residential equivalent employees you see on the third row here. You can see that that amount is gonna grow by 350. Then finally, adding, adding the population together with the residential equivalent employees gives us the total residential equivalents at the very bottom, and you can see there in the far right, we have a growth of 8,626. That's the denominator of the SDC calculation. So with the denominator out of the way, now we can start tackling the numerator of the SDC, starting with the improvement fee. So with, with parks SDCs specifically, there's, we, we use what's called the level of service calculation to determine the eligibility of any given park category. And specifically, we use those level of service calculations when we're adding new trail acres, or sorry, trail miles or park acres. So what we're doing here is we are looking at the level of service after the city has finished its project list. What level of service will it achieve, and how does that give us the eligibility for the projects? There's several ways to calculate level of service, but just for example here, we're just using one, which is the future level of service, and we're using it by unit of measurement. So I'm gonna use, I'm gonna just do a quick example here, looking at miles of trails. That, you can see that in 2021, we have a total of 19.65 miles of trail, which works out to a current day level of service of 0.78 miles per 1,000 residents. Now, you can see by the project list going out to 2036, we're expecting to add 4.89 miles of trail. That means that in 2036, once we've finished everything, our level of service, you can see on the second table here, would be .73 miles of trail per 1,000 residents. That's our future level of service, all right? Now, if that is our goal, if that's our target, .73 trail miles per 1,000 residents, how well are we meeting that target today? You can see in the next column on that second table, 2021 minimum quantity, that is how many miles of trail we would need to have to achieve that target today, 18.48 miles of trails. We already have 19.65, so we're already meeting that level of service target, which means that any additional trail miles we add by the project list will be available for future users exclusively. We don't need them for current residents, we need them for future users. So they get, those trail mile projects get 100% eligibility in the improvement fee. And not only that, but because we have extra trail miles built already, we have about 1.16 extra trail miles, those can be included in the reimbursement fee that Tim talked about at the start. So here is a list of all of those projects that add trail miles or park acres. You can see that there's a total project cost of 67.9 million. If you recall from the previous slide, based on the level of service calculations, it all works out to be 100% eligible for inclusion in the, the SDC. So all 67.9 million can be included in the SDC calculation. So that was just projects that add trail miles or park acres, but there's a second category of projects that we call the infill projects. Rather than adding trail miles, trail miles or park acres, these projects add amenities to your existing parks, they improve your parks in some way. And for these projects, we assume that existing and future users will benefit proportionally, they'll, they'll basically be sharing these new improvements together. In the future, by 2036, we expect that the growth will represent about 25% of the population. So their proportional share of these projects is 25%. That's how you get a total project cost of 36.5 million, but an eligible project cost of 8.6 million, because we're only allocating what is their proportional share to growth. And you'll see some projects have 0% eligibility, those projects are major repair replacement, and they, they don't really improve the park system, they just bring it up to its current standard. So those are not allocated to growth. Okay, so we have the expansion list, we have the infill list, we just talked about those, 67.9 million on the expansion list, 8.6 million eligible cost on the infill list, that gives us a, a total cost of 76.5 million for the improvement fee cost basis. So this one is much quicker, this is the reimbursement fee, the other half of the SDC, this one is just one slide. So you can see in the first white column that we, the inventory of park acres and trail miles that the city already has, and you can see in the second column there, the historical expenditures that we have record of the city spending on these, on these park categories. And then in the third column there, that gives us the investment per unit, just dividing the historical expenditures by the inventory. And you can see we have investment per unit there, that we then apply to the reimbursable units that you see in the fourth column, which is the number of units that you have available for future growth. And that gives us on the final column, the total reimbursal amount for those park categories, and all told, that's $2.4 million of reimbursement fee cost basis. We do have to make one quick adjustment before we see the final calculation again. The city has some outstanding fund balance for, for collected improvement fees, and because, remember, improvement fees are very much tied to the project list, any fees that you have accumulated in your fund balance represents projects that you didn't achieve on the last run of SDCs. So to avoid double counting any projects that were carried over to the new list, we, we remove that improvement fee fund balance just shy of 3 million to get a adjusted improvement fee cost basis of 73.5 million. Okay, and lastly, we'll bring it all back together again, so the improvement fee cost basis, 73.5, reimbursement fee, 2.4 million, and compliance costs, which are costs related to the methodology and administration of the SDC program. All of that together makes a total cost basis of 79.7 million. Once again, we divide that by our growth in residential equivalents of 8,626 to get the total SDC per residential equivalent of $9,242. When we apply that to the occupancy of all those dwelling unit types, that's how we get a maximum charge of 25,000 per single-family dwelling unit. And once again, that's just the maximum that the city could charge, it's not, it's not required to charge that amount. So staff is recommending a charge of $14,000 for a single-family residence. And lastly, I'll just leave you with a comparison of some comparable jurisdictions. On the far left, you can see your current, this is for a single-family residence, by the way. On the far left, you can see Wilsonville's current chart, parks SDC. In the middle, in that dark blue, you can see the staff recommendation for the parks SDC. And in the far right, in that dark blue at the tallest column, that's the maximum charge. So you can see that if you went to the staff recommendation charge, recommended charge, you'd be right in the middle of some comparable jurisdictions.
Thanks, Zach. And so to wrap that, this whole presentation up, just giving you the next steps for this process, we'll take your feedback, along with feedback from staff and other stakeholders. We will edit the policy analysis as needed to, to make sure that the methodology is correct based on that feedback. We will return, we'll be in front of you again for a public hearing, in which we will consider implementation options such as timing and phasing of the SDC. Hopefully we'll adopt the SDC, the update to the SDC methodology. And in the future, going forward after the adoption of the SDC, we'll recommend that you use indexing to make sure that the, the SDC is adjusted annually to reflect changes in construction costs. So that's it. With that, we will take any questions that you all have.
Wow, that was a lot of information, a lot of numbers, and still digesting it, but thank you for your presentation.
Thank you. Yeah, we know it's a lot, and so if, you know, if there are any questions that come up, you know, after this meeting, feel free to direct them to Chris, and we'll, and we'll answer them from him.
So I, I have a question, what, what is THPRD?
Tuolleton Hills Parks and Recreation District.
Oh, okay. Okay. And that, but that's separate from Tuolleton?
Yeah, there's City of Tuolleton, and then there's a Tuolleton Hills Parks and Recreation District, which covers a region, and I'm not exactly sure what their boundaries are, but I do not, ironically enough, I do not believe it includes the City of Tuolleton.
You're correct.
Okay. So when was the last time that we looked at parks SDCs?
2008, so it's been quite some time.
2008, and was the same methodology used to come up with the amount that we currently have?
I believe, I'll, I'll lean on the project team, I believe it was similar.
Yeah, you have to go through the same process, it's all prescribed by Oregon revised statutes in terms of how you calculate these things. And there's always, there's always questions of which project should be on versus which one should be left off. So there's always a dialogue, and there will be conversations with the home builders, because we have to provide the plan to them as well. So there'll be additional conversation, and I'm sure some more give and take as we move forward.
Yeah, it, it seems like, I mean, I understand the methodology and I understand where, where staff recommendation has ended up, it's just almost that it's, it's almost three times what it currently is.
And I would attribute that to the fact that we haven't updated it since 2008. I think that's 95% of the reason why it's so much higher.
Uh huh, okay.
Just two quick questions. On the infill projects, the 24.66%, is that standard set by state statute on the eligibility? That's on slide 12.
No, we're, sorry, this is John. The statute's not really prescriptive as far as how we come up with those numbers. All that is, is a proportional allocation. We're saying that those projects will proportionally serve the existing population and employees in Wilsonville and growth.
Got it. Okay, and then just one, one final question on the, the last slide, on the next steps on the cost index to make annual adjustments. So what I'm, my hearing is that means that we will not go another 16 years?
Typically, ideally, I would say, for your hard infrastructure master plans like sewer, stormwater, street, parks is a little different, so I would say, I would set parks aside. But typically for, for the big infrastructure ones, you wanna keep those within five to six years, so that you're not falling behind. And the indexing, all it does is it allows you to index your costs so that you're not losing out for CPI stuff or a construction cost index, so that we're not falling behind in that regard.
So is 15 years within standard recommendations for timing, or?
No, I wouldn't say so, I, I don't think you'd wanna go more than five to seven years.
Okay.
One question about, I, I do appreciate all the detail that we got on the calculation and how we arrived at the calculation. One detail though, that I wonder if we could get a little bit more information on, is the projected growth. And this was table, slide nine, I think, and And, um, I see that the source was from the Wilsonville Parks Master Plan for that projected growth when we're, we're setting what we think the population will be in 2036 and employees, um, in 2036. Do we know what the source was for the Wilsonville Parks Master Plan? I guess, like, where did that, um, come from? You know, I understand that it came from the Parks Master Plan, but where did that come from? And then also, are, how are we tracking towards those projections so far? Like, are we, are we tracking along the curve that was kind of set? Or, or what does that look like?
So it's kind of a hard question to answer. I, I think, I think it's probably tied to the metro stuff, but I'll let the consultants answer.
Yeah, I can help with that one. Um, I have the, uh, the table right here. It says that the, uh, the population growth you saw was based on Census Bureau data, taking the annual growth rate between twenty sixteen and twenty twenty-one, uh, which worked out to be, you know, about one point nine one percent per year. And then as far as how well you're tracking, the closest data I have right now is from twenty nineteen census data. I'm sure I could get better data if I looked, but just for quick reference, in twenty nineteen, the population was about twenty-four thousand three hundred and forty-three. And in twenty twenty-one, uh, as you saw, it's twenty-five thousand two hundred and eighty. So relatively close, I'd say. But I'm sure there's other data sources that could point to that more accurately.
So it sounds like it's just a historical kind of projection.
But kind of looking at that snapshot of what were the, the years that you said, twenty sixteen to?
Twenty-one.
Through twenty twenty-one.
Twenty twenty-one. I'm trying to think, you know, like, what was happening in Wilsonville between twenty sixteen and twenty twenty-one? And is that representative of what we see happening in the future too?
We had two-year pandemic, so.
Yeah.
Kind of hard.
Yeah.
There's so many different ways to do projections. I mean, Metro has its model, and it's based on unused land, what the potential capacity is. We always kind of spar with them in terms of their projections about Wilsonville, because we tend to grow at a pretty high rate.
Exactly.
Community, so.
That was my memory, that we usually kind of outdo the projections. So, but interesting then to hear what, what you had. Then most recently, we were maybe a tad bit under what that was looking at. So maybe, maybe it's getting dialed in a little closer. I, I don't know. I was curious about that. And then my other question, so kind of zooming out, we got, we got the whole formula. We got all those details. We understand how we arrive at the maximum defensible amount. But then how did we arrive at the, at the, the amount that staff's recommendation? Because, because that's like way dialed back from the maximum. And I, and I understand that we had that comparison chart where we're looking at the other communities, neighboring communities and such. But is that how we arrived at the, um, the amount?
It was really just scrutinizing the capital improvement project list and saying, okay, is it realistic that we're going to do this project, that project? Or is, or is this the best place to have that project? Maybe it should be something that could either be funded through a GO bond or through a grant through the federal government. So, uh, I don't know if Chris has any additionally he wants to add. We really looked really hard at that CIP list to say, you know, can we bring this down?
Because there's a big gap between, like, the maximum defensible amount and then what we're going forward. And then, I guess, a big gap again towards what we're at right now. So I'm just trying to figure, like, how did we land on that? That fourteen thousand right now that we're looking at.
Uh, scrutinizing of the CIP list and, and looking at the projects. And I don't know if Chris wants to refer to which ones we, we looked at.
Well, I think, you know, Brian's right on. We're just trying to be, um, I guess, practical, practical about what we're bringing forth and, and the time window that we have to do those projects. And also realizing that there's, I think, we're just the first in a line of other, um, system development charge updates. So just trying to be reasonable with, with the numbers.
And we'll say another thing that will kind of impact this or could potentially impact it is, you know, if you go out for a GO bond and you fund some of these bigger, like the advanced road one, that's going to impact the SDC rate. And so we, we really have to be mindful about how we, parks is the one SDC that I think you have the most flexibility with, I guess is what I'm saying. When it comes to streets, water, stormwater, and sewer, you don't really have the level of flexibility that you do with parks.
To, to forego projects, do you mean?
To forego projects, to look for other funding sources potentially. So it just, it's, it's, uh, it's a long way of saying, I think we have a lot of flexibility with the Parks SDC. And we are mindful that we are going to be coming forward with other master plans. I mean, at some point, it's just, the fees become a lot. And I think that's a concern on the part of staff, is like, we really need to be mindful about this, because if we're trying to quote-unquote, get to some kind of affordable housing, the reality is, local government, we fund infrastructure because nobody else is. So we have to have that balance of, you know, we don't want to put this on the backs of our residents. We think growth should pay its way, but we also need to be mindful of the fact that we're in a marketplace. And then we, we need to be responsive to the fact that, um, we need to be attractive to outside development as well. So we can't get, we don't want to be on the far end of the bell curve where we're like at the top of the, at the top of the curve.
Right. And so with that, that kind of, um, adjustment, I guess, then to, to the amount happen, looking specifically at the projects?
Yes. Yeah. One example is the French Prairie Bridge that we removed from the project list. And that's a big-ticket item.
Well, we, we actually, and this was, um, FCS's recommendation, is we, we left all the projects on to show that max defensible. But we're bringing forward the lower recommendation, just realizing that that's probably not realistic and palatable moving forward.
So could I ask a question about?
I can talk about that if.
Go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead, John.
If you'd like. So the, um, and I mean, your, your point is really well taken about taking projects off the list. The reason that, that we would recommend leaving the list intact is because, uh, projects have to be on the list in order to spend system development charges on those projects. So, um, in order to maximize your own flexibility, we're recommending that you leave the project list and just reduce the fee, because then you won't have to add projects later in order to spend the money on those, on those projects.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was probably inarticulate. I wasn't suggesting we should remove the projects, just that we wouldn't use them as part of the calculation. Because to that point, we, you know, it could be that there's a magic pot of money out there for the French Prairie Bridge, and we just have to provide a match of fifteen to twenty percent. So that might make a business case for, to moving that project up on your CIP list.
So could I ask a question about the project list? One of the things that we discussed at the council retreat was the age of the project list and the need for council to relook at that list again. Was that, was that a different list? Was that the list that came from the advisory board?
That was a, yes, that was the Parks Bond Task Force. But there was also the list with the facilities projects that was included with some of that unfunded CIP stuff.
Okay. So I'm just trying to get clear on what the projects are that we look at. Are we looking at some that are from the Bond Advisory Board and some that are not?
Yes.
Okay.
All the, all the park and trail projects, yes.
Every, every project that was identified by the Parks Bond Task Force, I think without exception, is, is in this list, is in the CIP list.
Okay. But they won't all be able to be covered by the, by this amount of SDCs?
No.
Well, I, I guess, I guess my, the reason for my question is that that Bond Task Force was done so long ago that I'm wondering, and given what John said about it needing to be on the list in order to be able to use SDC funds on it, are, are we kind of a little bit put in the cart before the horse in that the, the list may or may not be comprehensive or it may include things that, at the time that the, that the Bond group was looking at, at projects, they were appropriate then and may not be appropriate now?
No, because all those projects that were identified are in current master plans. So they're already identified as a project that has been vetted by the community. So really, when the Park Bond Task Force did their work, they had a, a list of ninety million? I don't even know. It was a lot. And they had to pare it down to a, a bite-sized piece that might get funded by the community, that they might support. I don't remember the exact number, but we went through the entire list, and they landed on a number, and a list of projects. So all those projects didn't just appear. They were part of the Parks Bond, or the Parks Master Plan.
Right. I guess my question is, are they still all the priority projects that, that, that the city wants?
Well, they were the priority of the Parks Bond Task Force that was going to make a recommendation to council. And the work that went into that was, we wanted to have, I think the criteria was, we wanted to have, uh, equity in terms of projects all around the city so that everybody got something and that we wanted to get the most bang for the buck. So the most users would benefit. So in terms of athletic fields or recreational opportunities. So I'm not sure if I'm answering your question, but those, those projects are all still viable.
Yeah, it's separate, the SDC list.
They're not, they're not the same thing. So the SDCs are not the same thing as what the Park, because the Parks Bond Task Force was going to recommend that we forward the, the question to the voters. So, um, they're, they're two separate issues.
And the SDC list doesn't have like a prioritization on that list? Like that this is happening first or second or third or, or anything like that?
No, I don't believe so.
Unless there's a safety issue or something like that. I mean, that's typically how the, we, we do level of service stuff and safety, those are, end up being the highest priority. But again, with parks, you don't really have those kinds of issues per se.
It's kind of just an all-inclusive list. That's the SDC list.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I want to make sure that I, I answered Council of Linville's question. I'm not sure I did.
Uh, I'm not, I'm not quite sure.
So the, the SDC list is all-inclusive of every project we have in every master plan, in the Parks Master Plan, the Blooms Ferry Park Master Plan. It's the global list of everything. And then in terms of SDCs, if it's adding capacity to the city, then it would end up as an SDC-eligible project. That's on the improvement side for the SDC. So all those projects would have been discussed at the Parks Bond Task Force, and then they went through a, quite an extensive process of trying to figure out which ones they would forward to a vote. So the question might be to John or to somebody else is if we, if we did go out for a bond in that past, what would that do to the, to the SDCs? That might be the question, the policy question that council would have, or I would have as a policymaker.
Well, I, I, the other side of the question is, understanding these infill projects that are listed here, is there still another list of projects that are still unfunded, that may still have to be addressed through a GO bond or some other funding, uh, some alternative funding source that are not included here?
Yeah, so I think in the case of the infill ones, it's like where you're, so if like you're, if you're replacing a bathroom in, let's say, Memorial Park, and it's just replacing same number of fixtures, right? Same size bathroom, then that's, that's basically just a maintenance project that I don't, I'm not sure would be SDC-eligible. But if you're adding capacity, if you're making a bigger restroom and adding more fixtures, then that percentage of that project would be eligible for SDCs.
Exactly.
Well, I still don't know whether there's another list.
There isn't, there's only one.
There's no other list.
There's a big global list of projects in the Parks Master Plan, and it would include infill. It would include capacity increasing, new, new parks, like Advanced Road, um, Athletic Field Park. Those are all, those would be new parks. Frog Pond Neighborhood Park, actually, that wouldn't be in the SDC, but it would be in the Parks Master Plan.
But they're, but they're included in the expansion projects?
Yes.
So what I hear you saying is that there is no other list?
No.
There isn't like a, like, like, I mean, you know, the swimming pool thing was out there for a long time. That's not still out there hanging around somewhere.
That's not on any list. That was, that was something that was a council goal that we heard the community wanted. And so the council at that time decided they wanted to put it up for a vote.
Yeah. And I don't mean that one specifically, but I mean, there's, you know, there's other, my, my sense, my, my sense is just to get clear on that this is all of the projects.
It's all that we're aware of based on those planning processes? And then the, all the Parks Bond Task Force, their task was to prioritize them. So, and I don't think what they prioritized three years ago is any different than it is today. So, especially from what we hear from community members that are, you know, and the pressures on athletic fields and those types of things. Those are all the, the very same issues that we had three years ago.
I just heard at the retreat that council wanted to look at that again. That's all.
And I might be throwing a wrench in, in things, sorry. But I'm remembering from the, that Parks Bond, and I could be remembering incorrectly. But I thought that there was something about like, um, paths in Charbonneau, and that might have been replacement or something like that. And I'm not seeing that on these lists for, for the SDCs, because that would probably be like a replacement, not a new capacity, right?
It would be new.
Yeah.
It'd be extension of the, of the path.
There were, there were both, I believe. There was a replacement of an existing, and there was also an addition of a new. So we'll have to double-check the list with the team. So I believe that one should be on the list.
Okay. I didn't see it on this, on this, um, project list right in this.
To be SDC-eligible, it has to be in a master plan.
Wouldn't that have been in Parks Master Plan?
That's what I wondered. That's what I'm wondering where.
We can get back to you on that.
Yeah, I'll get back to you on that.
There's also, there was also something in the, in the Streets Master Plan. So I just, we'd have to take a look at that.
Okay. That was just the one that stuck in my mind. I remember those Charbonneau, um, paths, so, yeah. Okay. But thank you. This was a lot of detail. And it's really helpful to know, you know, the, the methodology that we're looking at and kind of get a sense of the direction that we may be headed. Is there, is there other questions from council members? Nope? Okay. Well, thank you again. Appreciate your time and the presentation today. We'll look forward to keeping that conversation going. And our next item for tonight, for the work session, is the city civil exclusion policy. I believe our presentation will be from our city attorney here. And we have, um, additional print handouts, is that correct? That we should be referring to? Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, Council President Ocrevallum, Members of Council, Amanda Guile Hinman, City Attorney. I'm also joined tonight with our new law clerk, Megan Adams, from Willamette University's Law School. And so before we get into our civil exclusion policy discussion, I'm going to have Megan just share a little bit about herself and so you all can, can meet her.
Good evening, council members. I'm Megan Adams. I'm a native NewVadan, and I'm very excited to serve the City of Wilsonville in my capacities as a legal intern.
So tonight, as councils are aware, we're going to be discussing, um, a refinement to our civil exclusion regulations that are currently in Wilsonville Code, Section ten point five four zero. So as a way of roadmap for tonight, we're going to give you some background information about what led to this project being undertaken. Then we'll go over, uh, the proposed civil exclusion policy. And then finally, we'll end discussing the revisions that are before you tonight. So you all understand what should be coming forward forward at the next council meeting for consideration with regard to the civil exclusion and policy adoption. So, by way of background, there's basically two different, there's two different ways that the city staff utilize a civil exclusion policy right now. First, as I mentioned, is in Wilsonville Code, Section 10.540. And basically, what that says is, if an individual violates any provision of our city code and ordinance, or any applicable law or regulate, state law or regulation on a city property, they can be, we can issue a civil exclusion. And the minimum is a 30-day exclusion, then it goes up to a 90-day, and then 180-day exclusion, depending on how many violations have been committed. So, there's not a lot of specificity about that, except to say, it basically applies to any violation of our code or state law that, on city property. The second mechanism that we use, which is usually the more common one that we use, is the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office Exclusion Program. So, that's essentially when, typically what we see happen is that we have an individual who is consistently creating issues at a city facility, that issue is getting documented, and then we call the Wilsonville PD to come over and issue a trespass against them to exclude them for a specific period of time. Typically, that is a 30-day exclusion. So, that's pretty time-intensive, and it is a law enforcement component. We are talking about a criminal trespass. So, what we've found in talking with our city staff is that we need some more flexibility, but also uniformity in creating a process that allows city staff to administer civil exclusions that are shorter than potentially a 30-day exclusion. We find that there's a lot of times that an exclusion for the remainder of the day, or an exclusion for seven days is much more appropriate than an exclusion for 30 days. But what that means is, because we don't have that mechanism, no exclusion happens until we're getting to a 30-day exclusion. So, what we are trying to do is, with this policy, is define conduct that represents significant disruption. So, like I said, right now, all of our, all, what our code says is, basically, if you violate any city code provision, or any ordinance, or any state law, you could get excluded. Well, that doesn't provide great guidance for staff if they're going to be implementing this. And also, you know, we want to make sure that the public, to the extent they might be encountering this policy, we want it to be clear. So, we want to be very clear about the conduct that could represent, that could lead to an exclusion. And like I said, that indicates not only guidance for our staff, but also for patrons of our city facilities about what conduct is appropriate or inappropriate that could lead to a civil exclusion. And like I mentioned again, the flexibility to impose short-term exclusion, so that the exclusion for the remainder of the day, or a seven-day exclusion, so we're not going straight to a 30-day exclusion. Not only does that provide some nimbleness for our staff, but also, to the extent that there could be some legal issues when we're talking about excluding people from public facilities, having that shorter timeframe reduces that risk of some legal exposure in administering the policy. And then finally, right now, our city staff, it does allow under 10.540, there is some flexibility about who can administer this policy, but since we typically use the sheriff's office program, that's administered by our law enforcement, that's not administered by city staff. So, giving the authority for city staff to do civil exclusions without having a police presence every time that we're doing it, not only empowers our city staff, but also, you know, there may be a time when having that police element is going to actually escalate a situation, and we want to make sure that staff who are interacting with individuals on a daily basis can make that judgment call of when our police needed, or when can I handle this as a city employee. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Megan to talk about the recommendations we have for an update to our policy.
Sure. So, the policy that we put together is a culmination based on different municipalities in the area, and primarily looking at Medford, Salem, and Tualatin. And these, like Amanda was saying, allow for the deference of city employees to determine, based on a case-by-case situation, what exclusion is the appropriate remedy. And then, just to make it a little bit more clear for city employees, the chart is based on three tiers. So, there's disruptive personal conduct, which isn't criminal in itself, but it's more behaviors that are personal violations. So, that's where like, if you have like, exhibiting like a body odor, or if you're not following direction of staff, they can issue a warning and then address as needed. And then the second one is a disruptive property violation. So, those are behaviors that affect the property itself, which are like skateboarding on the facilities, or unauthorized use in general. And then, the final tier is criminal violations, which are codified under ORS, and also in the Wilsonville City Code as well.
Yeah. And I will say for the, one of the things that you'll see in the changes that we made, and this is particularly important for criminal violations, is that this isn't the only remedy that we can pursue when we're looking at exclusions. So, particularly when you're dealing with criminal violations, depending on the severity, there are other mechanisms besides civil exclusion to exclude people from city property, and we want to make sure that, to be clear, this is in addition to any other remedies that might exist in the criminal system.
And then, we have made actual revisions to this policy as well, based on feedback from city employees. So, for that, we expanded the offense descriptions, because the current Wilsonville Code kind of just lists the first six chapters of the ORS Criminal Code. So, this actually includes a little bit more of a definition to make it more digestible and less legalese. And then, they also categorized specific offenses to the preferences of employees who found it more appropriate to kind of rearrange as needed, based on what they're seeing on site currently. And then, we also expanded the language to include, instead of just being library-specific offenses to all city facilities.
So, for next steps, we are looking at a council consideration at its June 19 meeting, dependent on the discussion tonight, and for an effective date of July 1, 2023. In the meantime, what we're working on right now, from an implementation and administrative level, is creating standardized forms. So, there's different departments use different forms currently to report incidents and document disruptive behavior. And then also to arrange for employee training about this new policy, assuming that it gets adopted, you know, which staff are going to be empowered to implement the policy, and what steps do they need to do in order to do so? So, like I said, filling out forms. And the final thing is, is also working on the communication among staff. One of the things that we've heard is that a lot of times when there's an individual who's gets, who is going to get excluded, that they go to other city facilities. So, how do we document that and share that information across city facilities? So, that way, if a person has been civilly excluded and engages in behavior that should get them excluded, that it's now treated as a second offense rather than just a first offense. So, those are the things administratively that we're working on, that won't be part of the policy, that's part of the implementation. But that's also ongoing to make sure that this is ready to roll out July 1, assuming council adoption. So, there's a lot in the policy. We're happy to answer questions. And one thing that I did want to note, because it's a change that we're going to make that hasn't been made yet, is, as councils are aware, Wilsonville Code 10.540 has been updated as part of our camping code update, and so, the camping provision about civil exclusions has been removed. That's currently in this policy, but that is going to be removed, because it's being removed from 10.540, starting July 1. So, that's an update, I think it's number 47 in this offense list. It'll be taken out.
So, I have a question. Is there any provision for, for, depending on the severity of the offense, for us to move beyond the first, you know, the sequence of the steps?
Yep.
And I'm thinking of like a homicide, or something like that. There may be criminal charges that would be brought against that person, but we don't have anything to do with that. But we may want to not just simply give them a written notice and ask them to leave, or be excluded for seven days.
Exactly. So, that's why I say it's, this policy is in addition to any other remedies. So, the 30-day exclusion that we currently have in our code, and the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office trespass, those will still exist. In addition to, in the criminal justice system, there are mechanisms to have, to exclude people from certain facilities, if conduct, if criminal conduct occurs on those facilities for extended period of time. But that is case-by-case and is run through the DA's office.
Right. It may take a long time to even get.
Right.
So, I'm wondering if we couldn't have something in here that would allow us to, based on the severity of the incident, for us to move to a more severe sanction?
Sure. Yeah, that's something we can look at, doing basically an escalation, essentially that it moves you to a, like, the offense three consequence if it's a certain severity. So, yes, we can look at a sort of scaling of that.
I have a couple of just questions. One is a clarification on item 29, and that's in the selling, using, or distributing of cannabis, alcohol, or illegal substances. So, I struggled with using, and I struggled with cannabis, because since cannabis is legal, and using it is legal, is, does that preclude that, or should that still be included in the, in item 29?
We can look at that. I do know that we generally, in our city facilities, restrict the use of tobacco products. And so, I can't, I don't remember if when we did our cannabis update, if we did anything about cannabis specifically, but I know smoking, if it was smoking, it would be restricted.
Right.
So, whether it's cannabis or tobacco.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so we could look at the nuance of that.
And I may have missed it, but I did not see anything specifically tied to loitering.
So, loitering is, loitering is a very challenging thing, because when you talk about loitering, a lot of times, you're looking at individuals' personal right to occupy a space, and potentially a free speech issue. So, loitering and panhandling, both of those things get very difficult when you look at it from a legal perspective.
So, hypothetically, if you had an individual who was, didn't have a current place of residence, and they were at the entryway to the library, and they had all of their belongings with them, they were not physically blocking the entrance, but they might make it uncomfortable for other individuals to enter the library? I know that you have a clause in here specifically to blocking. I mean, is that when it becomes really a judgment call for the city, or the city employee at that point, on whether or not they're going to try and enforce?
Yes, and we also have some flexibility of things. I remember there's one about like not following staff direction, or, yeah, verbal or written abuse directed towards staff or persons. So, there's, so, one of the things that we try to do, and this is what the advice I give to staff right now, because a lot of times, what people will say is, somebody was harassing me. Well, you've got to be more specific than say, somebody was harassing me. What was the language that was being used? You need to be specific, because that's kind of what lawyers like to call a conclusory statement. You're concluding that they were harassing you, but you haven't told me what they did that's actually the harassment. And so, what these are trying to be designed around is the actual conduct, where people have to write down the facts of the situation. Okay, they've got a cart full of materials, and it's right next to the entrance, and they're standing right next to the entrance, and this is the, you know, these are the things they're saying to people as they enter, and we've instructed them not to enter. And so, now they're violating under, you know, two of these provisions. So, that way, it's like, you still have other ways of getting around it, and these are the things that we would be instructing staff when we're, when we're doing the training of, you know, the more detail that you put in, the more different offenses you're probably going to be able to get this under, and not get into those issues of, is it loitering or not, where we could have a constitutional problem.
Yeah. Go ahead.
So, you kind of mentioned that if they have a problem with the library, and they get written up, and then they, it's a rainy day, and so they go over to the community center. And then, the community center staff says, you need to leave, and they don't leave. So, there's the opportunity to write them up a second offense. Is that what you were saying?
Correct. But what we would be, so one of the things that's really important, and our staff are very good about this, right? Because, you know, our staff interact with people every single day, and some are more challenging than others, and it's not like their immediate reaction is, let me, let me write you up, right? Is that, it's if the conduct is ongoing. So, if they have an issue at the library, and the library feels like, okay, we've tried to work with this person, we've given them warnings, they're not listening, we're excluding them, and they let the community center know, as soon as they walk in, it's not like, okay, you're out of here. It's if they're continuing to engage in that behavior, right? If they're continuing to, or in other behavior, that's, that falls in line with this, then it's, then you're on your second offense of saying, okay, you, you got to go, and it's the city facilities are, you're excluded from all city facilities now. So, it's like, that's what we talked about with these escalations, and that is very atypical, but we do have them, that does happen every once in a while, where you have a specific, an individual who kind of bounces from one property to the other.
So, it doesn't specify, unless I'm just not reading it. I had to put other glasses on to be able to see the tiny writing. But I think it talks about one or more violations on different city properties or within imposed exclusion, and maybe cause for exclusion from all city property. Is that, but if there is an individual offense or violation, is it only for the place where it occurs?
Right.
And not all city property?
Right. Exactly. So, it's the repeat offenses is when you get the longer exclusions, and that it'd be the stricter enforcement of the exclusion. So, if somebody's having an issue at a park, we don't want to necessarily say, now you're excluded everywhere.
Yeah.
And similarly with the library. Yeah. Because it could be, it could be something like, yeah, you know, they've got their stuff spread out in the library, and then if they pack it all up and go somewhere else, and it's all contained, they're, you know, it's not an issue. It's if they're continuing to create the issue that we want to be, that we want to be mindful of. But again, I mean, what, we always, the city of Wilsonville is all about compliance first, and so that's what we're always striving to do, whether it's, they're initially at the library and they go somewhere else, or at that new location, trying to get compliance. Our staff are very good about working with, they've had a lot of training about working with individuals who are challenging.
So, this is sort of a take on it. Just wanted to say, welcome. I hope you enjoy your internship. You're working under somebody who's really, we think, a really wonderful employee and a role model, so I hope you learn a lot from her, and welcome again.
Well, thank you for the presentation. I do really appreciate that we may have a tool to kind of work with some of the nuance and, you know, dial things up as we need to, and work towards having, like, have that ability to respond, you know, to the situation that's presenting itself, so that we can get towards compliance too. And, you know, instead of if it's nothing, or, you know, I mean, it's great to have those different levels. Kind of in line with Council Linville's comment, though, about some of these more severe situations that are criminal, I think, like, everything that I see under the 34 category, or box 34, I think they have like homicide, kidnapping, and, I mean, like some really pretty intense situations, and I cannot see how, I don't know, or I would like to be able to understand, what situation would ever be okay to go, go to just a seven day, you know? Like, I have a hard time understanding how that would play out, but I might not be, I might not be aware of different situations, but I guess I'd be curious about that one. And then, kind of on the flip side too, though, I'm curious, because they have, let's see here, it says, oh, no, maybe it wasn't here, but appeal. What's the appeal process? If somebody is, you know, granted one of these exclusions, and feels that they need to appeal, and I want to make sure that that appeal process is reasonable too. And I noticed that it says that they can appeal in writing to the Wilsonville Municipal Court Clerk, and that the hearing should be held at the next regularly scheduled session of the court. How often do we have a court session? Because then I'm thinking, if some of these are, you know, only a day, or seven days, and then what is our frequency of having that court?
Yeah, that's a fair question. So, our court meets every other Tuesday, two Tuesdays a month, and that is a fair point. What you do see in other cities, what some other jurisdictions do, is that they will do, and there will be an appeal process to the city manager. One of the things that I have personally- One of the things that I have personally seen is that a lot of times that seems to be just an extra administrative step to get to a hearings officer. But it would address the issue of, it could be much more timely resolved than going to municipal court.
Yeah.
So we could do something where maybe a seven day exclusion goes to, an exclusion for seven days goes to the city manager and 30 days or longer, that appeal goes to?
The court?
The court.
Or something? Yeah, I mean, it would really depend on the calendar. Like if it's on the week where there's a court happening that next week, then it would make sense perhaps, you know. But if it's court just happened last night, now we have a bigger window or something. I don't know. I just wanted to make sure that that process is actually something that logistically would work too.
So in my role as the dean of students and having exclusionary policies as well, we allowed people to, in the appeal process, to appeal to a lower, you know, to a lower, they could request a hearing, a regular hearing, or they could appeal to a lower level like, you know, like the dean. But what was stipulated in that is that the decision of the dean was final. So that allowed them to have due process. But it didn't mean that it was just, okay, I don't like that decision, now I'm going to go to the next one, to the next one.
So they got to, they were the ones who elected which process and whichever process that was it?
Well, I'm thinking in this case where it's a, like an exclusion of the seven days, that they could appeal to the city manager within that period of time and then, which would allow them not to have to wait two weeks, but that the decision of the city manager would be final.
Yeah, we could actually probably do something like that and then just clarify that the step after either municipal court or the city manager would be a writ of review process. So any action that the city council takes, if somebody were to appeal that, the next, generally speaking outside of land use, it's generally then goes through a writ of review process. So we could, in circuit court, so we could clarify that. And I think that's a good suggestion for balancing that issue, yeah.
The other thing I wondered is, I know that there's something about a firearm and I think that's probably already in city code, right? But is there provision for concealed weapons? Where people are allowed to have a firearm?
We'd have to, I'd have to look back at that. I can't remember specifically. I think that came out of our code though. Yeah, yeah. So I guess maybe the question is for council is, other than the camping one, we pulled specifically what's in 10.540 and put that in. But we didn't necessarily specifically look at whether we should be including all of those from 10.540. So we could go back and look. I don't know about that one. But it comes from the code is where we got it from.
Yeah, and there may be statute that has superseded some of those. I don't know.
Okay, I think that looks like that's probably our questions or feedback at this point. And again, appreciate the opportunity to review this and have those discussions.
Can I ask one just? I think everyone was in agreement, but is council generally comfortable with the discussion that Counselor Linville had about the appeal process? That, okay.
The question is, is the city manager okay?
I'm in agreement with that.
Great.
Okay. Thank you so much. And that concludes our work session. So I hereby declare the work session adjourned at 6:47 PM. And we will come back here in just a few minutes. Thank you.
Thanks for everyone's patience here. We're just making sure that we're connected to the Zoom so that we have a phone connection for online viewing and we want to make sure that's in place. So apologize for the delay. Oh, good. Thank you. Is this like the ones from before too? This is the ones for the four from before.
These are the ones I registered ahead of time.
Okay, awesome. Okay, I think we can begin. So, welcome. A call to order, our meeting here at 7:06 PM, and ask that the city recorder please call the roll.
Counsel Barry.
Present.
Counsel Linville.
Here.
Counsel Dunwell.
Here.
Counsel President O'Carroll.
Here.
And Mayor Fitzgerald is excused.
Thank you. And first up, I invite the audience to please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the objective of justice for all.
Thank you. And noting that we have quite a few in attendance for this evening's meeting, I'll ask for a motion to approve the Order of Agenda, perhaps with a revision, so that we can take community comment earlier in the meeting and save everyone from waiting around a little. Give you a little bit more sunshine back in your day.
Counsel President O'Carroll, I move to approve the following Order of Agenda with the following change: to move citizen input and community announcements just prior to mayor's business.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I seconded.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve that Order of Agenda with the revision. All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, four to zero. And so then that brings us right up to our community input. And I'll just state that this period of our meeting is an opportunity for visitors to address the City Council on items that are not on the agenda. And it's also time to address items that are on the agenda but not scheduled for a public hearing. So staff and City Council will make every effort to respond to questions raised during citizen input before tonight's meeting ends as quickly as possible thereafter. And I ask to please limit your comments to three minutes. We have a nice clock here that'll help everyone keep time of their three minutes. And if you have comments that you would like to just emphasize that you agree with previous comments, you can also just say that. So, we have received speaker cards already. They're available at the site of the room for anybody that would like them. I believe all of the speaker cards that I have received are on the same topic. So I will just go ahead and start calling out names, and you can come forward to the microphone and begin. So the first name that I have is Margie Shin.
Thank you, Council President and Council. My name is Margie Shin. My address is on the speaker card. And I'd just like to say that I've lived along the Beckman Creek Corridor since 1994. We consider ourselves stewards of our part of the forest and have great respect for the animals and birds who come and go daily. Our hearts were broken during the Great Freeze in 2021. The loud crashing and popping of the trees in the forest was frightening for us as it was its inhabitants. So many trees came down. And now I'm afraid what you're planning in the corridor is to completely raise a huge number of trees to make this maintenance path for vehicles. My concern is the proposal of this paved multi-use path through this heavily wooded corridor that hosts many deer and other animals. Wilsonville has many bike paths, so many in fact that you just published an article on your website stating just that. There are ample bike paths on the existing maps that get around this section of Wilsonville one less than 600 feet from the proposed trail. Several sections of the existing regional trail utilize sidewalks and city streets within the neighborhoods. Somewhere along the plans of this project, it got off track. It's not sharing nature, it's erasing some of it. The interceptor can of course be maintained using equipment on non-porous surfaces, like getting a gator. You don't need like some massive huge truck. I mean, I'm not an engineer, but... Over the years, the corridor has struggled with stray needles left on the bridge, attics found face down in the creek by me, teenagers smoking and making mischief, and have even had a fire lit by someone who set up camp down there, and teenagers do it all the time. And other trouble seekers looking for a good place to hide these illegal activities, and none of this will change. It will most likely just get worse. The Beckman Creek Corridor is a hidden refuge for wildlife now, and by putting a wide largely accessible path down there, you welcome vagrancy in that same spot. The lack of visibility and plans for monitoring put not just us adjacent homeowners at risk, but also the nature seekers who use that trail. If you do put this trail in, the posting of all these things that are illegal is not enough. We need you to have a strong plan for enforcing those things and keeping neighborhoods and hidden trail users safe because it is heavily wooded. I favor the type of path that you featured on your postcard advertising this project. One densely covered by gorgeous low tree canopy with a soft path winding as one with natural environment. Do that. Honor the creek for that. I implore you to hold a public hearing and reconsider these permanent alterations of the corridor now. Where current Wilsonville residents can share their concerns and speak to the necessity of that type of trail. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Joseph Mazurek. I apologize if I got your last name incorrect there. Okay, thank you. Please go ahead.
Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Joseph Marzak. I've lived eight years at 28699 Southwest Cascade Loop, Wilsonville. My concerns are, I've walked the existing service road next to Bachman Creek from Wilsonville Road to Bachman Road, and it is a very difficult and isolated route. It has steep banks on both sides. There is limited access and visibility. If a person runs into trouble, it will be difficult to find if a person in trouble, and it will also be difficult to locate them and get them aid. It will definitely be a challenge. Let's see. Let's see, enticing more people to walk the trail, to use the trail will only increase it a little bit, but the danger will still exist. The trail will be hard to maintain and keep safe for the public. I fear that there will be an incidence that occurs that will be looked very poorly on the community. I do not have a back fence in my house. I encourage wildlife to graze. I am concerned of the impact of the wildlife. I have noticed that all of the deer at my house have left. We used to have deer fawns and does and a few bucks come in grazing. They're all gone. They've moved down the road about a half mile, or down the, I should say, service path about a half mile. And I worry that this trail will be a further impact on the wildlife. I also worry about the watershed. The, if we pave the path, there's going to be more chance of stuff making into Bachman Creek. And that is a beautiful creek, and we need to protect it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next name that I have is Donna Hammack.
Hi there. My name's Donna Hammack. I live at 28965 Southwest Cascade Loop, right on the Beckman Creek. Thanks for the opportunity to speak to you guys. I'm here to strongly oppose the upgrade of the Beckman Creek Trail behind my house, and I want to share my concerns as well as the concerns of my Cascade Loop neighbors. You have a copy of my letter to Andrew Barrett that I sent to him on May 16th that addresses many of my concerns. If you've never been down to the existing trail, I would encourage you all to please take a walk down there to see Mother Nature as she is now. And then imagine, thanks, how a 12-foot, I'm still talking loud, I know, I don't need that. And then imagine how a 12-foot wide paved bicycle walking path would impact and disrupt the preservation and the protection of the existing wildlife habitat. When this drill was, when this trail was envisioned 20 years ago, Wilsonville had nowhere near the level of crime, drug addiction, mental illness, and the lack of respect for our fellow citizens. I'm seriously concerned for the safety of our children and the impact of our affected homeowners, trail users, and even our first responders if they try to get down there. I've lived in my home for 29 years and believe me, I've seen it all. Please, please reconsider what you're creating in building this paved trail and seriously consider an alternative location that will not impact the safety of our wonderful neighborhood. Thanks a bunch.
Thank you. Thank you. The next name that I have is Erin Yatabe.
You did get it correct.
Did I get it correct?
You did. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, my name is Erin Yatabe, and my address is on my speaker card. And thank you, Council and Council President, for the opportunity to speak here tonight. First, let me say that I concur with the concerns of the three people who have spoken before me regarding the Beckman Trail Project. But tonight, I would like again to ask the Council, will you immediately publish the notification boundary for affected owners as discussed in Resolution 3003? On May 1st, 2023, we brought this question to Council with 14 signatures from property owners waiting for this boundary to be established. It's been 32 days, and the city has still not published this important boundary. Publish notice boundaries like this are part of the city process for good reason. And for this project, it continues to be delayed. I would like to point out that the Wilsonville TSP identified this trail, quote, "would require a comprehensive public process," end quote. If the city does not have a boundary set already, I request one of at least 2,000 feet from the current interceptor line along Beckman Creek. Our neighborhood alone consists of more than 300 homes. This trail and interceptor does not affect only the homes with backyards along the creek. Rather, its development will impact all the neighborhoods along the creek as a whole. This includes neighborhoods to the west side of Beckman Creek Corridor, neighborhoods between Wilsonville Meadows and Bachman Road, and neighborhoods between Wilsonville Meadows and Memorial Park. The commitment I'm requesting from the Council of 2,000 feet would ensure all affected property owners would receive proper notification regarding this project. When the interceptor work begins, the wildlife will be displaced and begin to search for shelter in many of the properties in the aligning neighborhoods. Once the construction begins, the traffic along the street will change as workers come and go to their job site. Once the trail is installed, the quiet culture of the neighborhoods will be altered as people begin to park and seek trail entry. This all concerns neighborhood, neighbors within 2,000, excuse me, 2,000 feet, not just the Wilsonville Meadows homes on the ridge. The notice for the open house held on May 25th was sent to an undisclosed group of participants. The open house was not published in any public city calendars, which dramatically limited public engagement, a direct conflict of Resolution 3003. For these reasons and many more that don't fit into the three minutes allowed tonight, I ask you again, Council, will you immediately publicly publish the notification boundary for the Beckman Creek Interceptor and Trail Project? And will you commit to a minimum notification boundary of at least 2,000 feet from the current interceptor line? Thank you.
Thank you. The next name that I have is Brian Wilcox.
Hello. For the record, my name is Brian Wilcox, and my address is on my speaker card. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. The intent of me being here tonight is to ask for a public meeting regarding potential neighborhood access trails to the Beckman Creek Trail. Some background, in 2016, there was an RFP for the bike and pedestrian plan. In this RFP, there was a bullet point stating an objective of finding and creating multiple access points to the trail. The 2022 RFP to concert referenced the 2016 RFP. This is the extent of the information on access points to the trail that we have seen. Survey crews have been present immediately adjacent to our 150-foot frontage to the trail at least five times. Most of the focus of the survey crews from our vantage point has been on determining elevations, the slope, from Iron Horse Street, which is in the Arbor Crossing neighborhood, to the existing trail creek. Iron Horse Street runs parallel to Bachman Road and is three streets to the south of Bachman Road. Bachman Road has been identified as being an access point to the trail. Some of the survey points below Iron Horse Street in our home include a pathway that is frequently used by visiting deer that have moved down from Joe's house. We see deer very frequently above the trail, parallel to the trail, living and sleeping, eating on the slope. The slope of the pathway results in a natural wildlife pathway and apparently is under assessment for ADA compliance as an access point to the trail. It would seem that the access point to the main trail for the Arbor Crossing neighborhood would be from Bachman Road, three blocks away, and not Iron Horse Street. The city engineering team has had a clear message that there is no plan in place yet for the access trails to the main trail, the main creek trail. It is clear that there is ongoing data collection for the access trails seen from the surveying that has been occurring in support, we believe, of the 2016 bike and pedestrian RFP. I'm surprised by the survey hours and expense in planning potential access trails with only a single bullet. only a single bullet point in the 2016 RFP. Our exposure is only limited to our immediate, the Iron Horse Street and our backyard. I'm sure it's occurring up and down the creek. It is hoped that the planning for the neighborhood access trails takes into consideration proximity to houses in addition to the wildlife that are impacted by access points to the trail. A majority of the homes in Wilsonville Meadows have frontage to the creek trail with no fences, and that was because of past direction from the city. Access trails will also increase safety concerns. In closing, it appears that there is a large expenditure to find and create access trails to the creek trail. It is apparent little direction of what is desired in an access trail occurs. It has been clearly stated that a plan does not exist yet. I look forward to public meetings prior to a recommendation for neighborhood access trails.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next, I'm going to invite Brett Tharp.
Thank you. My name is Brett Tharp, and my address is in the speaker card. First, let me say that I concur with the concerns of the five people who have spoken before me. I'm here to request that the Council insist their staff hold consort North America to their contractual obligations of maintaining a current project schedule. This request is in reference to professional services contract 220690 authorized by Resolution 3003 in October for an amount of $914,915. My interest in this project increased when surveying works were noticed behind my home. And apologies by the city staff, starting without notice, stated the survey works had begun early, even though it was contractually late. Through additional correspondence, the city staff confirmed the project as a whole was running late, and they advised to not reference the milestone schedule within the contract. A formal public records request this last month for the current schedule returned one last revised on November 11th, which shows the majority of tasks should have been substantially complete by this time. By way of personal background, I'm a professional engineer and work as a project manager for large government-funded linear infrastructure projects. It is common to have scheduled delays. I don't mind this. However, it is not practiced to wait to update the schedule after the delays have resolved themselves, as the city staff has suggested. It is not fiscally responsible to allow a capital improvement project continue without a current schedule detailing percentage of completion of activities. As such, the contract does have a task scope of work item to stipulate, quote, "a revised schedule to be submitted by the contractor following a significant change in project deliverables." As most items in this schedule are past their completion dates, with the city staff saying they have not been started, why has the schedule not been updated in the last six months? It is also not acceptable for the city to charge residents for three hours for city engineering staff's time to sift through project emails and documents to create their own static schedule when the city's contractor is obligated to produce one periodically. I hope the city council through statements tonight and previous council meetings, as well as recent petitions, can understand staying informed on this project is a priority to the community. An adage I have heard throughout my career as a private sector project manager, "If you cannot measure, you cannot manage." I urge the council to help the community resolve the problem in project oversight that we have brought forth tonight, and request the project maintain an active schedule as required by contract. Thank you.
Thank you. The next name I have is Stephanie Tharp.
Gotta lower this a little bit. My husband's a bit taller. For the record, my name is Stephanie Tharp, and my address is on my speaker card. This is my third time here before you all, so that's probably not new information. First, let me say that I share the concerns of the six people, actually seven, who've spoken before me. This is now, engaging with the city during this Bachman Creek Trail preliminary design process has been arduous, and I'm so weary. I request that the city clearly advertise the planned infrastructure in its public relations and separate the two projects in publications moving forward. During our own independent research, after the city engineers presented me with a line on the map as their only known facts about the trail project, we came to find that there is conflicting guidance and ordinances between the interceptor and the trail over the last 18 years since the project's acceptance, which is normal. However, notably, the bicycle and pedestrian master plan clearly states that the trail will require a comprehensive public process prior to implementation. However, when the city awarded consort the preliminary design contract, this comprehensive public process had been dropped, stating instead that public input would be limited. Another conflict between this project, the projects, is that the trail was noted to be a hard surface for non-motorized travel. However, now being combined with the interceptor, the path design is more substantial for required maintenance vehicle access. In addition, public involvement is actively being hindered by combining these two projects in public notifications. Residents interested in the conversion of green space into a trail naturally gloss over the current communication as it emphasizes an interceptor or sewage project first with a footnote about the trail. In addition, the namesake photo still listed on the website for this project is a beautiful nature trail and has no correlation with the intended design for this regional trail as outlined in the numerous city documents that I have now read. Even the Boones Ferry Messenger for this month created murky messaging about the requesting for public involvement on the sewage project and conversion of green space. The interceptor and trail have conflicting requirements, and by commingling them, it definitively reduces the efficacy of public engagement. I understand that there are design details that need to follow standards, of which public input would not be possible. However, visibility should be provided to those that need understanding of those decisions. That visibility has been removed by dropping the comprehensive public process from the current project. We live in a democratic community, one where access to information and visibility during decision-making is in fact a public process. Its design, security, and infrastructure dramatically affects us all. When the trail project was formed decades ago, the master plan creators knew that public involvement was key. They knew the community would in fact need to design as a committee so that the corridor could be respected, the neighborhoods kept safe, and the trail cohesively in line with the residents currently living along its banks. It's why those governing documents awarded us that input.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your comments. And now I'll invite Tammy Wilcox.
For the record, my name is Tammy Wilcox, and my address is on my speaker card. First, let me say that I concur with the concerns of the, I believe it's seven now or eight, people who have spoken before me. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today and for the city engineers' responses to the three petitions submitted in May of 2023 requesting meetings to be held on 10 key items for the trail component of the sewer project. This is a good start for engaging residents and what needs to happen as this project progresses. My ask today is for even more improved communication. The responses received repeatedly directed the petitioners to the city's website as a portal for information. Quote, "Project design information will be shared with interested community members through the project website, e-newsletters, through Final Design." Interested community members are defined as those who have signed up for notifications via website updates, e-newsletters, and text alerts. Residents want to receive this information, and they want the same straight and forthright answers. Land use conversion is important, not just to the residents who live along the creek, but for residents in our city who desire care and concern to be taken in the riparian corridors Wilsonville has left. Because the city staff has taken the approach to heavily rely on the city's website, residents are left to sift through the agenda packets for the Planning Commission, Development Review Board, Parks and Rec, and this council to see if decisions are potentially being made without resident input. Expecting residents to sign up for texts, e-newsletters, and the project website prohibits some from participating as not all have this technology. How is the city keeping the entire Wilsonville community apprised? How can they participate in surveys if not connected to online services? How much of the Wilsonville population has turned over since 2013, when there was extensive citywide public involvement regarding the master planning process for this trail? Case in point, many of my neighbors who have moved to Wilsonville over the past 10 years just houses away from, houses along the green space, were unaware of the trail plan. How many others are in the same situation? My ask is that the city increase its communication with the community regarding this project by assigning a counselor to act as a liaison between the community regarding the trail component of the project and the city staff managing the project. And also, I'd like to suggest that it would be good to use letters from the city, not just postcards, to get the attention of homeowners, because we get a lot of postcards in the mail that get recycled. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next name that I have is Anne Piazza.
Good evening, members of the council. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Anne Tam Piazza, and my address is on the speaker card. And I appreciate all of the previous speakers and agree with the comments and concerns that they have brought forward. Our family moved to Wilsonville just about a year ago, and we have grown to love this community and its surroundings. And Bachman Creek is one of the main features that attracted us and made the decision for us to purchase our home here. And Wilsonville, like many suburbs, have a lot of abundance of cleared and paved areas where families spend times outdoor. What is unique for Wilsonville for us and my family is the miles of the rural trails. And of all of these narrow trails, one can feel like they're in the remote wilderness. And moving from the urban cities of Seattle, I can tell you, we definitely appreciate that piece of nature. And Bachman Creek for us and our family is a piece of that pristine and special place here. The city sent a postcard suggesting a narrow footpath that is very much aligned with the community goal of preserving this beautiful nature space and protecting wildlife and the vegetation that grow there. And the footpath would also address the longstanding plan of connecting Frog Pond Neighborhood to Memorial Park. We certainly understand the need for sanitary line upgrade to accommodate the growing, expanding needs of this community. And we also understand the need to ensure access to the new sewage interceptor for maintenance. But what we don't agree with is the claim that this project demands a paved 12-foot path that paves over vegetation, that trims back green space, and that trims limb trees. And we do not understand why the city cannot utilize other trail-friendly vehicles, such as gators and others, to access and maintain the new sewer line. And the oil and materials for the non-porous pavement will damage the corridor irreparably. And additionally, the creation and upkeep of such a large paved space is expensive and extreme. And paving requires ADA compliance, and we want to ensure access to as many people as possible. But that paved service, but unpaved service and trail footprints is also used all the time in treasure spaces in nature such as this. And we believe that the proposed path should be as narrow as possible, and I urge you to make that a priority for your deliberations. And this would open up the canyon for people to appreciate the special place that it is without destroying the very thing that makes it special in the first place. And as you can see tonight, many of us in the community care deeply about this space. And we hope that you will share and continue to engage with us throughout the project so that we can balance the varied interests and with a shared commitment of supporting the growth of the community while also valuing and being good stewards of our land. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And then the last speaker card that I have is for Jeremy Hammack.
Hi, my name's Jeremy Hammack. I'm here on behalf of actually my neighbor Carrie, and my address is on the speaker card. So when we bought our home 18 years ago, we fell in love with it immediately because of the natural habitat, natural habit, but realized with the relationship to the city's property was also great responsibility. Very quickly after we moved in, we learned what it meant to respect such a sacred place. We never wanted a fence and have landscaped our yard to become one of the natural green spaces and hopefully encourage mainly many animals along with their offsprings to thrive. We have also consulted the city throughout the years to not disrupt the green space natural habitat and have taken this responsibility very seriously. Sorry, I can't read this very well. As well as our neighbors have the city's advice, say, "Animals among the corridor are many. We have residents, deer, rabbits, beavers, birds, and preserve their homes. The trees and vast natural growth is something truly to behold. Have you walked the corridor? Witness this forested area? What are we setting out to do as necessary for the expansion? The pipe work fine, but the trail, do you create fast- flying and rapid for transient people? No. These animals depend on us to fight for them and to be good neighbors." My question tonight is, why is this, why is it all good to invade one of the last places in Wilsonville where large groups of wildlife can still exist without much intrusion from the public? So unless someone will create, unless someone like you cares a whole awful lot, nothing is going to get done, better it's not. And that's it.
Thank you.
Stop building, please. Just stop building.
Well, I want to thank everyone for coming out. If you would like to speak, please fill out a speaker card at the side of the room. We can wait one moment for you to quickly fill that out. And then you can hand it to our city recorder here. You can hand it here. Thanks. Thank you. Okay, that's right. Come on up. We have Brent Sunkey, Sunkel? Okay, thank you.
Kind of going through some tonsillitis here at the end.
You know, you and me both. You and me both, so, yeah.
So, um.
Please go ahead.
All the speakers, I didn't expect to speak tonight, but everyone's been very good and a better speaker than I am. But I certainly support everything that they have said. And my wife and our family, we've been in Wilsonville 30 years now, live on Cascade Loop. And I think we're very seriously invested in Wilsonville, love Wilsonville for all the reasons that many of you do, I'm sure. Probably about a month ago, maybe six weeks ago, I noticed a survey crew out in back. There's a green space in back of my yard as well. And I asked them, you know, what was going on? They had a very detailed map, showed me, you know, this in back of my house in particular. They termed it a secondary entrance, secondary entrance path, not the sewer path, not, you know, not the main path, but a secondary path. And so I learned a little bit more about it. And I also know a little bit about the council's objectives this year. And number one, I know safety is a big, like the number one priority that I saw on your list. I saw environment as number two. And I just want to talk about the safety issue of this. The more I learned about it, the secondary path and the original path, I know that in 30 years I've known Wilsonville, it's not quite the same, and the world's not the same as it used to be. But I, in the last two years of where I live, Cascade Loop, have been a victim of a crime, burglary and assault by two different burglars. One was in our garage. He was an armed felon. He used that path in back of our home in some way to get into our garage, stole some items. items. I chased him, ended up holding him down till the police were able to apprehend him. He's now doing eight years in prison. But the point is, it was full of, his truck was full of items he'd stolen. He used that pathway, another burglar, similar situation, I was assaulted again in that, in our neighborhood. And now I think that secondary as well as the first pathway, it's inviting, it's a safety hazard for everyone in our neighborhood. And it brings in a lot of different people. And they've been camping in back as well. So, safety, environment, I agree with everyone else, it's an issue. So I hope you take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. And actually, I want to ask if we have anybody on Zoom as well? No? Okay. Wanted to make sure we covered that too. Thank you all for coming, taking the time this evening to come and share this feedback. There's been a lot of points that have been covered in the comments, so I don't know how staff would feel best to respond to all of the points. We definitely heard comments, themes about the type of the trail and path, safety concerns, impact on wildlife, watershed, access for first responders, notification boundary, the open houses, the on-public calendar, the project schedule, access points to the trail, the interceptor project and the trail project, the opportunity for public input, the website and communication channels that are non-digital as well as print communication pieces. There's been a lot of points that have been covered this evening. So I'm wondering how best to respond to those. Obviously, I don't think we can respond to all of them in this evening's meeting with the level of detail that we probably all want to have. But want to give staff an opportunity to make some comment now and also explain how that follow-up might be expected.
I guess what I would say is that I've taken pretty copious notes here, and we probably have a lot of it submitted to the city recorder. So what I'd like to do is maybe go back with the engineering department, see what is new that we didn't respond to in the previous petitions. Anything new, we would just provide a supplemental response. But otherwise, I think most of the stuff has been brought up before and has been responded to by staff. So anything new, I think we would respond back to council and to the folks that testified tonight in some kind of a written format.
Okay. So council will receive a copy of the response as well as everybody's name and address is on the speaker card, so we have that information. And then speakers will also receive that response.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that clarification. And again, I appreciate everyone coming, taking the time to make comment tonight. We don't do like a back and forth dialogue during this period of the meeting, so that's our process and our formality for the meetings to keep them running smoothly. So that's what we have. And again, it sounds like you all are familiar with the project website, but contact information directly is on that project website?
I don't know if Zach has anything you want to add on scheduling or the project website for folks that may be interested. Anything new that's come up since we sent the response memo out, if you do? I'm not trying to put you on the spot. If you don't, it's fine.
Yeah, I can address. Good evening. Zach Weigel, City Engineer. And yeah, so we did have an open house. I was just going to add that we had an open house two Thursdays ago and heard a lot of the same concerns. Great, great feedback for the design team. We've collected all those comments and questions, and we were compiling that and drafting a response. A lot of the same things that you heard tonight. So we're putting that together. The project team's reviewing it right now, so we should have that hopefully next week out. And then like Brian said, we'll add anything new that we heard tonight to that. So getting the information out. As far as schedule, we really need to get through this data collection and processing the data before we can put together a new project schedule. We need to know like when we can meet new milestones before we can update the schedule. So we need to get to that point.
Okay. So, may I ask a question? So Zach, what I hear you saying is that there is a plan to have a new comprehensive project schedule?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay. And that will be available for all the citizens to see?
Yeah, we can provide that information.
And look at it too? Okay.
We don't do dialogues or anything. We'll get it as soon as we possibly can, and we'll make sure that you receive it. I think we need the survey data before we can commit to any kind of plan forward. So survey data is crucial to that, and we will get that to you as soon as possible.
Thank you all again. I hope you have a good evening, and we're going to move to our next portion of the agenda, which is the mayor's business. Again, our mayor is not able to be here with us this evening, but I will cover a couple of the events since our last council meeting that was on May 16th. On Memorial Day, I had the opportunity to attend the Memorial Day Observance Ceremony that was at the Korean War Memorial. And this is an annual event that is held in our city. And actually, Councilor Linville was there as well, and she may have some comments to make about that event. And wanted to alert people that this summer, we will actually be having an unveiling for the Korean War Memorial Interpretive Center that's going to be housed at the Parks and Rec Admin Building. And we'll have more details for that specific event soon, but perhaps Councilor Linville wants to talk a little about the Memorial Day Observance Ceremony that we attended. Since our last meeting as well, we had a number of budget committee meetings with our budget committee members from the community. And later this evening, we'll consider for adoption that budget that we reviewed and want to give a big thank you to our finance staff for the many hours that they put in to prepare that city budget, but also to our budget committee volunteers who reviewed and approved that budget. It's a very special kind of volunteer that reads, what is it, 400 pages of budget material for that review? And I deeply, deeply appreciate those community members that give so much time and attention to that work, because it's very important. It drives the work of the city. So a big thank you to those community members and to everyone that participated in those meetings in the last few weeks. On May 30th, I attended the Urban Renewal Task Force meeting that was held here at City Hall. And that was kind of a first step to look at urban renewal feasible, or feasibility study, I guess, for the town center area. And I believe that council will actually be hearing some more information relatively soon about that work as the task force will be making some considerations over this summer and kind of looking at the pros and cons of creating a new tax increment finance district that would support the future town center development projects, those infrastructure projects that we've been talking about for a number of years. And then some upcoming events. I want to note and acknowledge that since it is June, it is also Pride Month, and this is an opportunity to show support to members of Wilsonville's LGBTQIA communities. And on June 1st, the Pride progress flag was raised at City Hall and will fly throughout the month in support of our LGBTQIA community members here in Wilsonville. The library has also done a wonderful job curating and presenting a pride display feature in the library, looking at works by authors and further reading material that is open for our community. I also want to mention that on Thursday, that's June 8th, this Thursday at 6:30 in the library, will be the next session in our DEI lecture series that we've had. And I've been able to attend a number of these lectures that have been held in the community, and they've really been a great opportunity to learn and just hear about another person's experience that may be different from my own and better understand what their life experience has been like and also learn about different events that have happened that shape everyone's life experience. So there's more details about that that are available on the city's website. And finally, I want to announce that on June 19th, there will be, well, excuse me, it's actually on June 17th is the Juneteenth celebration. However, Juneteenth is on June 19th. And in our packet tonight, we have a proclamation declaring June 19th as celebration of Juneteenth in Wilsonville. That's in our meeting packet. But the actual Juneteenth celebration, which is going to be held in the Town Center Park, will be on Saturday, June 17th. And that'll be from noon to 3:00 PM. And this event is funded generously by a few Wilsonville businesses. Swire Coca-Cola is the platinum sponsor for the event. Oregon Tech and Hilton Garden Inn are both silver sponsors. And this event will have a keynote speaker, Pamela Slaughter, who is from PDx People of Color Outdoors, DJ Bryson Wallace. There'll be lunch provided by Mississippi Chef. That's kind of a limited quantity, so until supplies run out. But there will be plenty of presentations, educational materials, giveaway, it says, lots of stuff going on there in Town Center Park. And our next council meeting will be on Monday, June 19th at 7:00 PM. And with that, we are at the communications portion of our meeting, and so I'd like to invite Wilsonville Community Sharing to come up and give a presentation. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Cricket Jones. I'm the Finance Operations Supervisor. I'm here tonight to introduce Jerry Bohart as the Vice President of Wilsonville Community Sharing and Lee Crosby, the Executive Director. I feel so lucky to have this organization in our community. We refer citizens periodically throughout the year for help and assistance with paying bills, and we always get positive feedback. Everybody tells us how kind and nice and supportive and how they truly listen to what their needs are and do everything they can to try to help them out. So let me turn this presentation over to them so they can tell you more about their program and how the grant funds help support their mission.
Thank you. For the record, my name is Jerry Bohart. I've actually been a resident of Wilsonville for 25 years, give or take. I've been involved with Wilsonville Community Sharing for about 10 years, and I've been Vice President for the last two years. So saw my son through the entire Wilsonville West Lynn School District. So, and now he's gone, so that's a good thing. So anyway, I've enjoyed working with Wilsonville Community Sharing, and I think we do some great things for the city. You can see under what we do. This is just a snapshot that Lee Crosby keeps on an annual basis and actually probably on a quarterly basis that she shares with the board. I think it's important to note that we are seeing an increase in need, whether it's utility assistance, whether it's the food bank, housing, all of those things are certainly coming to pass. I think two key reasons. One is you're seeing a lot less funds after the pandemic, right? So there's a lot of different financial support that was happening for families during that time. But then quite honestly, the move has been a real positive thing. We have much more foot traffic and just awareness of what we provide. And so while I know Lee pulled out her hair a little bit as we did the move, it's been a really good thing for the organization. So we appreciate the sharing of that building. It's been a good thing. You can see our team here, so we got a really very good board, but we wouldn't be able to do what we do without the staff that has been around for a very long time. So I know Lee has 20 years plus to this, and Andy and Ann, both long-term commitments to Wilsonville Community Sharing. One of the things that we also do, and I know this is a little hard to see, is really sort of keep track of sort of who is using this. So one of the things we do look is at authenticity, just to see what that breakdown looks like. But I think in a way, one of the more interesting ones is looking at sort of our climate, our client age. And you're really seeing here that we're starting to see a much older clientele using the services, right? So the 65 and older, that green is increasing, the family, right, with the 40%. So when you really look at the differences in the breakdown between 21 and 2022, you can see that the need has changed from an aging perspective. So a lot that we've accomplished, the royal we, mostly done over by this lady to my side here, but moved to the new location, as I said, very much a benefit. I know we're starting to have a conversation around the building that's going to go on near the smart site and what that looks like. But again, I think the access has been to our benefit. Certainly, some of the ARPA funds, we still were working on distributing those. You can see how we've seen with our move just that increase in individuals. And the other thing is that staff has really looked at ways to how to streamline this. A lot of that happens, obviously, as you have greater need. So certainly taking more advantage of technology. I think some of the things that are very interesting that are in the works, and I can't really speak much to these, but certainly Lee Crosby is getting very involved in the homelessness issue and housing access and what does that look like? I know she, I think she just took some training last week, as a matter of fact.
20th.
Oh, the 20th. So coming up. So, and then I mentioned the Todd Development, and then updating our fiscal policy. So I think which links very much into the work that we've done here. I know later tonight, you are going to be approving the resolution for our grant. A couple of things on that one. Really appreciate the fact that you're really looking at a five-year, and I realize it will be, you know, looked at on a yearly basis. But knowing that certainty really allows us to be more strategic in what we do and think about what we need to do. I know as part of your packet, you were also given some guidelines that we'll be using as how we'll be distributing those funds. It certainly made us realize that we needed to update our fiscal policy, which goes beyond just the grant, but all of our funds. just the grant, but all of our funds. And so that's something that we have a working committee on the board that, and that will be approved by our board. So really incorporating your expectations will also be approved by our board as well. So really set some structure for our staff in the work that they do. And then just, we've, you know, we've been doing some strategic planning, but we always recognize that there's a lot of education and community awareness. You can never do enough of that, and we need to be doing some more of that, making people aware of what we provide, right? And I think actually being connected to the community center is very helpful. I'm also a volunteer for the senior luncheons, and so just hearing what some of those needs are has really helped me think about being a board member for Community Sharing. And then I think partnerships. We wouldn't be able to do what we do, obviously, you're probably our most important partnership, but working with all the utility companies, when we work with the Scouts, everybody, we work with just about everybody locally, and we wouldn't be able to do the things that we do without the partnerships. So with that, if you have any questions, I'll probably turn them over to Lee, but we're glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you so much. It does look like there's questions.
I do, I actually have some comments. I think I've shared with all of the counselors that I had the opportunity to tour and spend some time with Lee. And it was right after the Scout food drive, and those shelves were full. And watching the greater community participate is just, it's very awe-inspiring to see the, how the symbiotic relationship between volunteers like the young men and women and Scouts and groups that are neediest can really make a difference and lift, lift so many people up. I'm really interested in not only the change in the demographics, and I wonder, do you, can you make a connection between being closer to the community center, which is mostly seniors, and the increase in senior participation in Wilsonville Community Sharing? Do you think it's lifting the awareness by the proximity?
I think it's a little bit of both. The location is really ideal for the seniors. The bus goes directly to our building now via, you know, the dialer ride or the bus stop. At our other locations, the bus didn't, you know, it was a couple of blocks away and everybody had to walk. So I think that's a big turning point for some of the seniors. They can just walk over now. But also, you know, things are getting so much more expensive, and for a lot of the seniors that we see, it's fixed incomes, medications are high, rent is high, and that doesn't leave much left over for food. And at the end of the month, we don't want actually anybody wondering if they can buy the medication for their family, or if they're going to be able to feed their family or keep their lights on, and which is, you know, instrumental in what we do is we, our turnaround time, we try to get everything done and paid within a 48 hours, just because most often we don't get calls in advance. We're the call when it's a crisis. And we do get a lot of seniors. We have some seniors that are in their 90s that are still needing help from us. So, you know, we do what we can, and we try to get everybody whatever they need, plus sometimes a little bit more, because, you know, if they call for food, food's a symptom of what's really going on. So after doing a pretty thorough intake, we can kind of find out what else is happening. You know, have you been out of work this long? Is your medication no longer covered? Can we help you with that? So it's, we kind of try to get the whole picture.
So it sounds like you do some triage at the same time. That's excellent.
Kind of have to.
Yeah, absolutely. Great. Well, how long have you been with? I know you mentioned that earlier.
25 years.
25 years. It's amazing, amazing. Thank you so much.
Thank you for what you do. I mean, it's just incredible, and we're happy to partner with you. I'm having a little difficulty reading the graph, the diagrams that you did, because it looks like the colors for the different populations changed from '21 to '22, and the categories changed.
One changed, yeah, yeah.
Well, yeah. It looks like the five to 17-year-olds, where did they go? Because they're not represented at all in the...
Exactly. Where did they go? Did they move? Did their families move?
So there were none? It was zero? Because there's not a category.
Yeah, there isn't any.
There's none?
Yeah.
Wow.
Or, you know, they moved up to 18. But yeah, that was quite something for me to see too, because we don't put in the dates. We just have, have the program break it down. And I thought that was real interesting also. It's, you know, very few littles. We're getting 40, 40-ishes and up now.
Yeah, so it looks like you're not serving really anyone, I mean substantively, you're not serving anyone less than 18 years of age.
And that's not by our choice.
Sure. Oh, sure. But that's a really interesting...
Which we've kind of watched that trend. I know that, you know, during COVID and the food stamps, and all of the families that were getting food stamps got extra bonuses. All of the families that had children, the children got additional money also. So that padded everybody for a little, a little while, which is why, you know, during the COVID time, our numbers went way down, plus the unemployment money. Everybody got a bonus on that. You know, even if you weren't affected by COVID, you've got that unemployment money. So the, that's what's always funny is we look at this and, you know, we always hear, you know, oh, you know, the children are starving, and, you know, we'll look at our numbers and, and we're like, no, it's us older people now that are starving. Somehow the kids are, are not, their families are not coming to the food bank as much as we can reach out. We do get some, but on a typical day, and I know that maybe on the day that you were there too, we're getting a lot of ones and twos. It seems like we're getting a lot of singles or two, two-partner families. And then we'll get a mix of a family of eight. And a family of five, and, you know, a couple more families of eight. In the old, old days, I, I could tell you every family member that would come in. And right now, we're just seeing lots of new people. Usually I could look out the door and I could log everybody in in the computer because I just knew them so well. And, and now when, when families are coming in or individuals, you know, our first question now is since we don't recognize them, have you been here before? And how can we help you? So that's, that's been really interesting for us to watch that too.
So, so do they, do you require that they live in the community, or do you just serve them?
We suggest that they live in Wilsonville. There's, we never turn anybody away for food. However, you know, if we find somebody has traveled all the way from Oregon City, we locate the closest food bank for them to go to, and there's no need for them to use other gas. However, for all the utility assistance and the rental assistance and the financial assistance, they do need to live in Wilsonville.
And so are you, are you seeing in these numbers more people that cannot identify a residence?
We see about 15 on a weekly basis that do not have a designated residence.
Okay. And that's kind of consistent with what we're hearing about our numbers. So thank you. Thanks again for what you do.
Can I add one more thing to Councilor Linville's comment about the individuals who don't have a place of residence? There is that they actually have a cold refrigerator for like fast, you know, sandwiches, ready-to-go sandwiches and things like that, which is just fantastic for someone who may not have cooking utensils or stove or, you know, is truly someone who is homeless. So I was really impressed to see that. And those, a lot of those are donations that are coming from the grocers, correct?
Safeway and 7-Eleven will, will get, mostly from 7-Eleven, we get a lot of sandwiches and salads and sandwiches and, and all of that. So we keep those in a specific area for any of the homeless that do come in, and they, they know that they can wander in anytime during the week while we're there to see if we've got something to eat or drink. We do have a microwave, so if it's something hot, they can go heat something up.
I see. That's good.
And grab-and-goes for, you know, they can take with them too.
You know, I wonder with the, it was an interesting observation with the age of the people that have needs and are, are coming for service. I wonder too, like with the, with the school district has the Family Empowerment Center, and I wonder if some of those younger members of our community are, are going to the Family Empowerment Center and getting, you know, some food or assistance in that. And so that might be changing some of the, the ages too that we're seeing, but this is, it's, it's great to have this data, and it's really interesting to, to see and better understand the needs that currently exist in our community. And I so very deeply appreciate the work that you do and the support from our community members on, on the board. It's, it's just an incredibly important part of Wilsonville. So thank you.
Do you appreciate all the support that you've given us for so many years?
Quick question for you. I remember when I visited in February, you had said that you, you saw the number of individuals coming in and with requests had gone up by like 80%. Are you still seeing that level of increase?
Actually, yeah, we just closed out May, and for May, we had 408 individuals that, counting every member of the family. Last May, we had 203.
Oh, my gosh. Yeah. I mean, again, those Boy Scouts are so important, aren't they?
Yes. Perfect time of year for them to have done their food drive for us.
Is this your troop that worked?
No, it's not, but I have worked with many of these kids. So they're not exactly my troop, but yes, we...
Yeah. And so all of the Boy Scouts, all of the community groups that partner, it's so important.
And the churches. I mean, everybody, they, they, different ones will say, we will say we need toilet articles or whatever, certain things. I haven't seen it at Safeway lately, but they used to almost have tables and say, well, when you go in there, would you get an extra can of soup or diapers?
Sure.
Or whatever it is. So we do try to target sometimes what some of our needs are, depending on what we can't get from the Oregon Food Bank and what we need to supplement.
So, and so from anyone who may be listening, what would you like to see other community members be able to donate individually to the food bank?
So if anybody is wanting to go shopping, we desperately need soups right now, and not just tomato soup or cream, you know, something hearty, soups and chilies and canned fruit. We're in the peak of fresh produce season coming in, which we've been getting a lot of oranges and apples. And when we are able to give out fresh items like that, we kind of hold back the canned foods unless they're necessary, so that everybody can get the benefit of the fresh produce, and we can save the canned when we don't have it.
Sure.
And personal hygiene items, obviously, deodorant, laundry soap, those kinds of things. They are not able to purchase those with their food stamps.
Pet food?
Pet food. And large-size diapers.
And checks?
Checks, yes. Checks always.
Checks are always great.
And make the money go a long way by purchasing our food through the Oregon Food Bank.
Gas cards?
So if the checks are made out, how would you like them made out?
Wilsonville Community Sharing.
Okay. Thank you.
And that information is also on our website to show how to donate.
Which many of you do.
Thank you. Thank you so much. We appreciate having you here this evening. And then our next presentation is DEI Committee Progress Update. And I believe, well, I see Ms. Mombert, and I also see our Chair of the DEI Committee. Please welcome.
Am I doing it right? Am I doing it right?
Thank you. Thank you, Scouts, for coming.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, or excuse me, we don't have the mayor, Council President Ockervall and City Council. I'm Zoe Mombert, Assistant to the City Manager and Staff Liaison to the DEI Committee. And with me this evening is Imran Hyder. He is our DEI Chair, and we are going to share with you the accomplishments of the DEI Committee over the past fiscal year and what they plan to do in the upcoming year.
All right. Hi. So first slide just kind of outlines the structure of our group. We thought it was important to keep our two high school members as well, so that's kind of why they're in parentheses there, because we get 11 and then two, which equals 13 at this point. And then we also split into subcommittees for different projects, of course. And so the two main objectives that we've tried to accomplish are the Juneteenth event that's coming up that you mentioned, and then we've had the Speaker Series, is what I like to call it, because sore subject as a college professor, we don't like to lecture. Nobody wants to go to a lecture. But we try to create sort of a community feel with our Speaker, the Speaker Series has been put into one of the subcommittees as well. And so those are that kind of the both, the big pushes, I guess, for 2023 currently. Okay, we can go to the next slide. And, okay, so I guess I'll just talk a little bit about, there's slides for all of these though, right? So we can kind of go through them. But, so we have the Speaker Series, the cultural calendar, and then we have the development of our, our cultural events. But really, our, our goal here is to, I think the overarching goal of our committee is to open doors for people in our community. And really, if it's misconstrued in any way, you know, we, I just want people to know, like on record, we're not here to close doors anymore, and we're here to open doors for people. And I think that that's where we get to the elevate, promote type of, that, that literature is important, because it's about trying to figure out how a person who has not felt comfortable in their identity for their entire life feels confident today because, you know, they see a pride flag somewhere. So, I mean, I think that's really just encapsulates the work that we try to do to sort of elevate people that may not feel belongingness in our community. And so that's sort of a synopsis there of, of why we make these the priority projects, because I think that we've determined as a committee that they are very integrated with our mission and our vision as a group. So we can go to the next slide and just kind of talk about these. So that's, this is a sort of a summary of our Speaker Series. Sorry that the font's too small. Hopefully, none of my students are watching this. Okay, so the, the five events we had were started in March and then April, May, June, July. Each month, sort of, we tried to connect it to our cultural calendar as best we could. We couldn't get Oregon Black Pioneers in February, Black History Month, so we just started in March. And then in April was the conclusion of Ramadan, so we spoke about sort of being Muslim locally and what that's like, and then sort of educated people on some of the misconceptions of the religion. And then in May, just recently, we had a great turnout. And I guess it's worth mentioning that we had slowly a bigger turnout at each. So our March event was, was good, was great, because we're not really judging on quantity here, but, but we had more community members show up to support these events each time we've had them, which is a really great sign. And we had to add, Zoe and I and Bill were adding chairs at our last event, which is a good feeling, because it's a... a good feeling, because it's a great feeling. We didn't have enough chairs for people at the Sharp No Event Center. And then, um, just this coming up, is that Tuesday? Or no, Thursday. Thursday this week, we're going to have our, our next one at the, the library. And then, um, in July, it's a Persons with Disabilities Focus. And that will be at the Clackamas Community College Campus, Wilsonville. So, yeah, hopefully I'm not missing anything. I'm trying to be efficient here. So the cultural calendar is just a, again, to help promote or give people voices that, that sort of historically didn't have voices. Like I knew, I grew up celebrating holidays that were, I kept silent about because I didn't feel confident telling my friends at school about it. They didn't know about it. So when they asked about it, like when I was fasting, it was awkward because then I'd have to explain it and they were just, they'd never heard of it. So it's almost like if it wasn't federally recognized, then nobody knew about it, right? They didn't have winter break for that holiday, for, for me at least. So I think at this point, like the fact that the city is recognizing these holidays is, is really significant. It's amazing because it helps people to feel belongingness. And I know for some people that might sound like super cheesy and it's, it's just like not really a measurable, tangible thing. But belongingness is important where these holidays or these, these months that have themes are, you know, purposeful for, for people that may not have historically had an identity. And so the cultural calendar is sort of designed to educate. And it's just people, hopefully somebody in our community will see a significant day or month on the cultural calendar and, and say, wow, I didn't know that was going on right now. Maybe they Google something and they learn something new that day. And hopefully we sort of catapulted that process. So I think that's kind of the goal for that. And then our, our sort of advanced goal is to plan, we're not an event committee, but we try to sort of, if we're going to plan something, we try to correspond it with our cultural calendar because then things can match up a little bit better with what we're trying to do as far as educate our community. And so that's kind of been the goal here with the speaker series that I went off of was to, what's going on the cultural calendar? We can do, we can have a speaker series that aligns with that, just like Juneteenth, which is on our cultural calendar. And so we're having an event in a couple of weeks. And that's something that, just on a side note, has grown in three years. Now it's the third year. And we're just overwhelmed, we're humbled by the community contributing money. Because I don't know if people out there know, but we're not using city money. We're actually getting donations. People are signing up to support us with, they're giving money to this cause or they are donating sometimes books and/or food products. And that's just really cool to have people come out and say, we want to be a part of this or grow this event so that the public can come out and enjoy, or the kids can come out and enjoy. So that's another just side note for why we think this work is great because it involves community and then it also tries to, to match up as best we can with all the different initiatives that we have going on. Do I have one more slide or am I done?
You can, you can keep talking.
No, go ahead. So Zoe's going to take over.
Thank you, Imran. One of the other priority projects that we worked on this year was supporting cultural events. And this is an area that we were hoping to focus on with other cities in the, in their surrounding area as well as the school district in order to elevate, promote or support, partner in the development of cultural events. This is an area that we will continue to work on in the upcoming year. This year, we had hoped to do more with Dia de los Muertos at the high school. In working with them, we were able to at least support their event by sharing it on social media. Hopefully we'll be able to be more involved in the future. Imran also spoke at the school district's Equity Summit. So that was really exciting and I believe that's something that the council and other community leaders have participated in. We feel that there's a lot of, or we, the, when I use the term "we" throughout this presentation, I'm referring to the DEI Committee. Feel there's a lot of opportunity in order to promote and support events that are nearby. As Imran mentioned, we are not, or they are not, an events committee. There's only so much capacity, but there's a lot of things going on in the neighboring communities that if we can share that information, we're still providing access to events or opportunities that we may not have known about previously. Next is collaboration. Collaborating with city departments such as parks or library and boards is another priority level three project. This year, the committee was able to work to identify the symbols on your screen as a part of the Parks Holiday Symbol Hunt, previously known as the Gingerbread Hunt. They also had a joint meeting with the Arts, Culture and Heritage Committee in October. They helped the Parks Department share a survey, which was something that they were able to reach additional audiences that they hadn't reached before. And they also provided extensive research on the flag policy and the camping ordinance. Highlighting sharing perspectives of community members that tie to a monthly theme. As Imran mentioned, this would be tying to the cultural calendars, including interviews or columns. These are the four community voice columns that were in the Boons Ferry Messenger in this fiscal year. Two were in 2022 in September and October, and two were in 2023 in February and March. This is something that the committee is really engaged in, whether it be community members on the committee or other community members that want to share their story. This is an area that we can provide that information and hopefully opening someone's eyes to new perspectives. You'll also notice on the masthead, for the second year in a row, we have the colors of the traditional pride flag that are here as a way to just show people in the community that this is an, an area of importance as well as making people feel a sense of belongingness as Imran mentioned. A few additional accomplishments that we've had, um, the committee is very appreciative of the council's approval in order to display the progress pride flag that's in front of our building. And that, the visual representation is a priority level three project. The DEI Committee, as mentioned multiple times tonight, but I will take another opportunity to thank our presenting, our platinum sponsor, Swire Coca-Cola. Our silver sponsors, Hilton Garden Inn, Wilsonville, Portland and Oregon Tech, Oregon Institute of Technology for making this event possible. And this is not something that the city funded this year. Previously had been a grant through the Parks Department. This year, it was all the amazing sponsors on here in order to make this possible. And, um, because this committee is focused on education, I do want to take a moment and take a few excerpts from the proclamation that was in your packet this evening. So for those that are not familiar with Juneteenth, the Emancipation Proclamation became effective on January 1, 1863. However, it wasn't until June 19, 1865, that people throughout Texas, where there was not a lot of enforcement of the proclamation, were informed that slavery had been abolished. In 2021, Juneteenth became a national holiday. And that is why we celebrate Juneteenth and it's become our premier event of this committee. And something that our committee members have really gotten behind, they not only participate in a subcommittee, but they also attend and volunteer at that event. So what's next? In '23, '24, we will continue the programming that you saw. And there are the two, so the, the items that we focused on this year were a priority level one, in addition to a few priority level two and three that were mixed in. But next year, the priority level two projects, as time allows, will be something that we start to incorporate into the work program of this committee, in addition to anything that staff or different departments bring to the committee. That is our plan for the next year. The two items on your screen are engaging you to provide regular social media content and providing recommendations regarding existing programming and events to make the community more inclusive. Those items have not been developed yet. Those are just the items from the action plan, so more to come on those. And Imran and I are happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you for your presentation and thank you for your work this year. I know getting this committee off the ground and being able to accomplish what you've done is, has been great. So thank you. My question has to do with the sponsors. And were funds from those sponsors used for the lecture, for the, for the speaker series? Or were the, was there funding, any funding or was that all volunteer?
So the, the speaker series was funded by an opportunity grant from the Parks and Recreation Department. Any other questions?
I just would also like to say thank you for your presentation and thank you for your hard work. I think you are right. It is all about education and exposure of the ideas. Like, um, I'm going to make every effort to attend the Juneteenth event. You know, in the past, I just kind of heard it, about it and didn't really know what it was. So I think what you're doing is just step by baby step going forward that it's really good for our community. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming and presenting on all of the many things from this last year, but thank you for all of that continuous work month after month. I feel like I've seen, having sat on council for, for a little bit of time, that the work of the DEI Committee is, it's fabulous on its own, but it's also able to make the work of council richer. And, um, it, it's a, it's like a multiplying effect or an exponential effect. And, um, so I, I really appreciate, um, that gift to, to the entire committee and, and how it's, it's able to be woven into so many different areas.
Yeah, we appreciate all of the support from all the city employees and all the boards and committees. It's, you know, it's mutual, reciprocal. And we also want just the general public to know that this, you know, I think DEI gets put into different conversations politically and it's unfortunate because it's not political. I mean, making a ramp or making something ADA is part of what DEI work is and how it's existed. Or getting a pride flag, you know, hung anywhere. If you drive through Beaverton, there's like a thousand. And that's, that's not political. That's just community, right? So I think just, we've been very honored to have so much back and forth with our city. And so I, I just think that that's worth mentioning too, is that we wouldn't be here or exist or do what we're doing without the support of everybody here. You know, Brian and everybody who is a part in designing what we do as a community is only going to take us as far as we want to go with our work, right? So that's, it's just, it's a team effort. So we, we truly appreciate that. And in two years, we're very thrilled with everything we've done. Because like I said, it's not about quantity. I just think it's a one conversation at a time thing. And that's my, my cliche that I use all the time, but I think it's one conversation at a time to help change, you know, the community or improve somebody's life. And I think we're doing that. So, yeah. So we really do want to thank you as well for the support and Mayor Fitzgerald as well, but she's not here, but I'm sure that she'll hear this at some point, so.
I know you've heard this from me before and I'll say it again. 14% of our population is Hispanic. And I would, I look forward to seeing continued focus and, um, and attention paid in the coming year to that segment of our population. I didn't see it picked up in the lecture series this year and I know we've discussed that. It's important because many of them are invisible. And to continue to focus on that, I think is a really critical part of the DEI Committee going forward.
Yeah, I think that, that, we hear you. I think that's awesome. Like it's, it's noted and the five speakers that we had this year were people that were willing to speak on a topic that we had in mind and it was about organization. But completely agree with you that it's something that needs to, because it is such a, a large percentage of a minority population. So I totally agree. I mean, I think that that's our next goal for next year is to make it a priority. And, um, you know, we, we need to elevate those voices of people that are our community that haven't been elevated traditionally, but also recognize that there's a good percentage of people that live here that still aren't being recognized, that need to be uplifted by whatever it is, you know, symbolic, physical or an educational piece. So I will take that back to work. We meet soon, so we'll discuss that for sure.
Great. Well, thank you. Thanks for the presentation and for joining us this evening. And with that, we move to council comments. And I'll first invite, um, Councilor Limville to, to make comments, liaison reports, meeting announcements, et cetera.
Thank you. As Council President Ockervall mentioned, I also attended the, um, the Memorial Day event at the Oregon Korean War Memorial. And, um, uh, Council President Ockervall had a really wonderful, um, presentation and gave a really good history about, um, the Korean War Memorial. And, um, there actually was a World War, World War II veteran there who was, he was just approaching his 100th birthday. And he may be one of the very few left in our community of World War II veterans. But I think we need to recognize that we're very fortunate to have that located in our community. And it is the Oregon Korean War Memorial. And the, um, just to be a little bit clearer about, um, our, the interpretive center and the celebration that will be held, um, uh, in July, I believe it's in July. And that, that is going to be on the 29th of July. And it is 10:00 a.m. And it will be in our Parks and Rec, um, where our Parks and Rec Administration Building is, in the, in the new interpretative, interpretive center. And we really do encourage our community to attend that. I attended two Metro Community Enhancement meetings and maybe Council Barry will, will speak more to that. But, um, that was an opportunity for us to review applications for money that is coming from Metro, specifically for community enhancement projects. And I want to make a really, um, a really emphasized, um, public request from our community groups for the next cycle. We really want to increase the opportunity, that opportunity for community groups to access those monies. And we don't get enough community group applications. So we will be looking as a committee at how can we, um, how can we increase those applications? And one of the ideas that I think would be a great one would be for, um, people who are either our citizens who are listening to our council meetings or people who are attending or staff who may have connections to community organizations. And we will personally reach out to them if they, if you will just let us know as, like I'd like to nominate this organization to ask them to submit a project. And those could go to Zoe, um, at the city manager's office and either by telephone call or an email. We'd be delighted. And then we will reach out to them and encourage them to think about a project that might meet the goals of the, that, um, that funding. On the 7th, uh, coming up this week, I will attend the Opioid Settlement Prevention, Treatment and Recovery Board meeting. Just an interesting, um, note about that board. They are really struggling with how, how do we, how do we take care of this problem in, in the state of Oregon? And the thoughts, when they did some brainstorming, were all the way from, um, you know, just some very small focused projects to how can we change the values of people? And so it's going to be interesting to see how they can really focus in on what really can be done. And I think about communities that are our size because that's what I represent, is cities in the state of Oregon that are 10,000, that are at a minimum 10,000 people. And thinking about how do we provide prevention, treatment, and recovery services to those people who live in our community? Because they're not going to get up and go to Oregon City or Clackamas or downtown Portland or someplace else to go get services. So that's the real challenge, I think, for our cities, is to figure out what's the best strategies. And so I will be looking to my colleagues and to the League of Oregon Cities to maybe look at our constituent of cities that are our side to try and get some feedback and help. And then on the 19th, I will attend the Greater Portland, Inc. Small Cities Consortium meeting. That is always a little bit of an iffy group. Sometimes there's a lot of people there, and most of the time, there's eight or nine people. So it's, I will bring you information from that, from that meeting. So thank you.
Thank you. Then Councilor Barry.
Thank you. So I also attended the Community Enhancement Committee along with Councilor Lindfield. It was on two different nights. And the first night, we basically reviewed different applications. And I was really impressed with the variety of applications that we looked at and that will be bringing to the city council. So one application was from the city's library for e-bikes. And they want to get an electric bike that has a big basket in front that they can put materials and bring to events and have a display. So it would be an outreach program. And another application was for webcams to put out in our natural areas so that we can watch wildlife. Another one was for the skate park where there's a concrete wall and to do an art mural across that. We had another application that had really great ideas, but it wasn't as complete as we were hoping. So we're hoping that they'll come back with more information for us to approve sometime down the road or for them to explore other means of money in the meantime. And then on this last weekend, on Friday and Saturday, Mayor Fitzgerald and I attended the Metro C4 Retreat. And C4 stands for Clackamas County Coordinating Committee. And so the first night, our focus on Friday was housing, affordable housing. And then on Saturday, we discussed tolling. I thought it was a really great opportunity to get together and create and build more relations with all the different elected officials and staff from nearby cities that are within the county. And then also, state representatives were there. I thought it was really good for communication. I really enjoyed it. The one thing I was disappointed with is that on Saturday morning, our focus of discussion was on tolling. And I was really disappointed that the ODOT representative didn't come in person for the discussion, but showed up virtually, which, to me, that really limits how, the flow of communication. So even if the ODOT Director of Urban Mobility wasn't available to come in person, we all took our time. And I'm sure ODOT has, is an agency large enough so they could have, you know, sent a substitute probably for a better discussion. But overall, it was a really great opportunity. I'm really glad I got to go on the retreat. So thank you.
And Councilor Dunwell.
While all of you have been busy, I've been enjoying the sunshine. I actually, other than attending budget, the two evenings of budget committee meetings, I also attended the French Prairie Forum with their virtual calls. And the focus was actually on tourism and development. And what was really interesting is we had Aurora, Donald, Canby, Gervais, Hubbard, St. Paul, and Woodburn, and Travel Salem all make presentations, which was eye-opening and exciting. And then Mark Ottenhead from the city of Wilsonville just kind of came and just was this amazing encore because he talked about how we cross-promoted all of their activities, including Canby, you know, especially Canby, but also the others, in all of our Wilsonville tourism promo. And so there was a lot of appreciation for the work that Wilsonville is doing to promote the entire area. And talked about some of the social influencers that we're using in our Instagram. And what is it? Discover Wilsonville, isn't it? Explore Wilsonville. And that those influencers were, they're doing some pretty good work. Yeah. Is that you, Zo? That's, yeah, yeah, it's great. It's fantastic. So that was really exciting. So that's it for me, other than the fact that I do want to call out Dwight Breschier really quick because he's sort of a hero within the mass transit community with the article that was in Mass Transit Magazine. So if you're a mass transit geek, that's your mag, right? I mean, that's your place where you go. And it was actually, I think, I know that Brian shared that with all of us on council, but was so cool, it was about the ODOT award of the $440,000. And it's regarding the mobile battery backups. Super cool. And then I think there was something else about feasibility study, about long-distance use of electric vehicles. Yeah, and some of the longer tours. So I'm sure Dwight was really pleased to see his name. And it actually had the picture of one of our buses and things like that. So pretty exciting. So that's it for me.
Terrific. Okay, thank you. That brings us to the consent agenda. And I ask if the city attorney could please read the consent agenda into the record.
Resolution number 3031, a resolution of the city of Wilsonville authorizing the city manager to execute a construction contract with S2 Contractors, Inc. for construction of the 2023 street maintenance project, capital improvement project number 4014. Resolution number 3061, a resolution of the city of Wilsonville authorizing support grant agreement with Wilsonville Community Sharing. Resolution number 3070, a resolution of the city of Wilsonville authorizing South Metro Area Regional Transit Smart to purchase four CNG compressed natural gas buses from Northwest Bus Sales, Inc. Resolution number 3071, a resolution of the city of Wilsonville amending the city's official zoning map to incorporate previously approved quasi-judicial and legislative zoning map amendments and adopting a new 2023 official zoning map and minutes of the May 1 and May 15, 2023, city council meetings.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as read?
Council President O'Carroll, I move to adopt the consent agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the, or adopt, the consent agenda as read. And I ask all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes 4 to 0. And that brings us to the public hearing. And I ask if the city attorney could please read the title of resolution number 3062, 3063, 3064, and 3065 into record.
Resolution number 3062, a resolution declaring the city's eligibility to receive state shared revenues. Resolution number 3063, a resolution declaring the city's election to receive state shared revenues. Resolution number 3064, a resolution of the city of Wilsonville adopting the budget-making appropriations, declaring the ad valorem tax levy, and classifying the levy as provided by ORS 310.060 sub 2 for fiscal year 2023-24. And resolution number 3065, a resolution of the city of Wilsonville authorizing a supplemental budget adjustment for fiscal year 2022-23.
Thank you. So I'll call to order the Wilsonville City Council public hearing on resolution number 3062, 3063, 3064, and 3065. Ladies and gentlemen, the city council will be taking public testimony tonight at this public hearing. The hearing will be conducted in the following manner. First, staff will present their report. Second, testimony will be asked by those who wish to testify. Third, the council will consider a motion for each resolution separately. This meeting is being held in person and remotely by Zoom. If you are listening to the meeting remotely, when the time for public testimony is called, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom or press star 9 on your telephone if you would like to testify. If you're having difficulties with these instructions, you may call the number shown on the screen and enter webinar ID number shown on the screen when prompted. When called up to testify, state your name, your full name and address for the record. I request from those providing testimony not to repeat testimony that has already been given to the city council, simply indicating you agree with a prior testimony given by a speaker that you identify as sufficient. Thank you. And now I'll invite staff to present their report.
Hello, I'm Keith Katko. I'm the city's finance director. And I'm here tonight with Catherine Smith, the city's assistant finance director. We'll go through a few resolutions that we will present to you tonight related to the budget. The first two relate to state shared revenues. And this may sound like deja vu because we are required to do it twice. We did it once at the budget committee hearings. And this will be our second public hearing and discussion of it, as well as the resolutions that accompany it. And the first one is to acknowledge the eligibility to receive state shared revenues. And that is just based on if the city provides four or more certain, certain public services, including police, fire, planning, street construction, sewer, storm, utility services. The city provides all but fire, so we meet the eligibility. So we'll pass a resolution tonight explaining that we meet the eligibility. The other one that we do is a resolution for the proposed use and election to receive the state shared revenues. We have to elect to receive them. And the proposed use is outlined on the chart above and reflected in our budget document. It's the election to receive state gasoline tax, which will come in about 2.2 million. That goes in the road operating fund. And the remaining three state shared revenues, we put in our general fund, including the alcohol beverage tax, the state shared revenue, and the proportionate share of the cigarette tax. And all four of those are based on allocation, based on population for the city. And then the third resolution is related to the city's 23, 24 annual budget. And collectively, all city funds combined, the budget is $277,476,344, including, and that includes the 1 million addition to CIP 4014 that we added during the budget committee deliberations for the street maintenance project. Just two more points on this budget in general. As you can see here, these are all the funds. Every fund has its own budget. And these are all detailed, in more detail in the city's budget book, as well as outlined in the budget message at the beginning of the budget book. So I won't launch into another six-hour presentation of the budget. But that is definitely, it's definitely online. And in the condensed version, is probably most easy to digest in the budget message. The operating budget for the city is 57.2 million. The other point just to leave you with is the legal level of control is at the fund level as well as certain classifications within those funds. It's at the department level, which is the personnel services, and material services, and capital outlay for any specific department. And it's also at the capital project level, the debt service level, transfer level in contingency. So there are many levels of budgetary control within each one of those funds. So when we talk about the $277 million city budget, we're really talking about a collection of 24 separate individual budgets. And that is the presentation on the annual budget, unless there's any additional questions on that. And I just wanted to touch base with the city attorney. Are we going forward with one? Okay. And so the other resolution tonight that we're discussing is a resolution for a fiscal year 22, 23 supplemental budget, which is our current existing budget. And Catherine will touch on that.
Thank you. I'm Catherine Smith, the city's assistant finance director. And before you this evening is a fiscal year 22, 23 supplemental budget. Included in the supplemental budget are three items. This includes unanticipated changes to legal appropriation in the amount of 170,000. Included in the supplemental budget are three items. The first is fencing, landscaping, and signage for the new camping code. The second is an increase to the road operating fund for sharp no tree preservation. And the third is an increase to the storm water master plan update. This is for the incorporation of Newland Creek and Cruz Creek geomorphic assessment as part of the storm water master plan update. And that concludes the public hearing for the supplemental budget, unless you have any questions.
Do any councilors have questions for staff?
I do. I actually, it's a question and a bit of a comment too. I was really pleased to see on the supplemental budget, the allowance for the camping, the new camping code for the fencing and the landscaping and the signage. We have not addressed potential additional costs and potential allocations going forward for enforcement or compliance. And I understand that that's where we're at because it's an unknown. But as we move more towards the enforcement of the camping ordinance and the administrative rules, I would really like to see as we're monitoring the success and the needs of the program throughout the year, that we all stay cognizant that we may need to modify the budget as necessary to meet some of those unknowns that are out there right now.
Yep. And if we have to make adjustments, we can do that through a supplemental.
There is $50,000 incorporated into the budget next year for the ongoing maintenance of that.
Right. What I was more specifically addressing was compliance. Yeah, compliance and enforcement. So, but thank you, Catherine.
Any other questions at this point? Okay, then I'm going to ask if there's anybody that wishes to testify. And do we have anybody that wishes to testify online? Nope. Okay, so I'm assuming that no other questions from council, no other comments from staff at this point. So with all of that in consideration, then I will, and we've given opportunity for everyone to testify, I hereby declare this public hearing closed at 9 o'clock. Look at that, exactly 9 o'clock. Okay. So now, we're going to consider each of these resolutions separately. And first, we'll consider resolution number 3062. Do I have a motion to approve resolution number 3062?
I move to approve resolution 3062.
Was there a second?
A second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 3062. Is there any discussion?
No.
Then hearing no comments for discussion, I'll go ahead and call for the vote on the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. So the motion passes 4 to 0. And next, we will consider resolution number 3063. Do I have a motion to approve resolution number 3063?
Council President, I move to approve resolution number 3063.
Was there a second?
I'll second it.
Great. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any, or to approve resolution number 3063, and is there any discussion? Then seeing no discussion, I'll go ahead and call for the vote on resolution number 3063. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. So this motion passes 4 to 0. And next, we'll consider resolution number 3064. Do I have a motion to approve resolution number 3064?
Council President O'Carroll, I move to approve. Council President Ackerval, I move to approve Resolution Number 3064.
And is there a second?
If I can just interrupt, I think we have to do the, all the language, don't we, for the resolution?
No.
Not for the, for the Budget Committee because they don't have a resolution to refer to? That's why they have to do the whole long spiel. But because you have a resolution, you can just approve the resolution.
Okay. So, our staff notes said...
You were referring to listing out that very long number.
The recommended language has all the information.
All the numbers. So, we're talking about Resolution Number 3064, which is included in our packet with all the details.
Are you sure you don't want this?
I thought we had to in order to do the levy and...
Yeah, I think you do need to do the...
My understanding is all that information is in the resolution.
It is.
Yes. So, by approving the...
...the amendment that...
Yeah.
Yeah. I think we're good.
Okay.
I'm recalling that we had a motion for Resolution Number 3064, but I'll ask if we have a second. I think that's where we are currently at.
I'll second.
Okay. Excellent. So, it's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 3064. And is there any discussion? Does not look like discussion. So, I will go ahead and call for a vote on the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes four to zero. And finally, this brings us to consider Resolution Number 3065. And I'm asking if there is a motion to approve Resolution Number 3065.
Council President Ackerval, I move to approve Resolution Number 3065.
I'll second it.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 3065. And I wonder if there's any discussion from my fellow counselors here? I don't see any discussion. I will, since this is our last of the four resolutions for this period, I just want to emphasize again my appreciation to staff for preparing the budget, all of the work that goes into that. You write a book every year, folks, you do. To fellow council members for the excellent discussion that we had during those Budget Committee meetings, and certainly to our community partner, the community members that are part of that Budget Committee, and all of the work that they do, the careful consideration and the examination of the materials that's presented, and also the questions of how does, how will this work? Are we accounting for X, Y, and Z? And all of those things that were covered, I believe you mentioned during the six hours of meeting or presentation. It might have been longer than that, actually. But I have a lot of appreciation for that dialogue and all of the work from each party that went into that. So, with no further discussion or commentary, then I will go ahead and call for a vote on the motion for 3065. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the motion passes four to zero. And this then brings us to city manager's business. Do we have any city manager's business this evening? Any legal business?
Just to let the council know that I will be out Wednesday through Friday next week, but I will be available. You all have my cell phone, so if anything comes up, feel free to call.
You'll hear from us. Okay, thank you. So, I will hereby declare the city council meeting adjourned at 9:06 PM. And don't get too quick here because I'm going to call to order the Urban Renewal Agency meeting, unless folks need a break. Let's dive in. Okay. So, I call to order the Urban Renewal Agency meeting Monday, June, it says June 6th, isn't it the 5th?
It's the 5th.
It's the 5th. Monday, June 5th at 9:07 PM. And I'll go ahead and ask the city recorder to please do a roll call.
Member Berry.
Here.
Member Linville.
Here.
Member Dunwell.
Here.
Vice Chair Ackerval.
Here.
And Chair Fitzgerald is excused.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the following order of agenda?
Council President, or Vice President Ackerval.
Or member.
I move...
Vice Chair.
Member. Vice Chair Ackerval, I move to approve the consent agenda.
For the order of agenda?
Order of agenda, excuse me.
Thank you. So, it's been moved and seconded to approve the order of agenda. Here it says the order of agenda is amended, but I believe that we are going with our original order of agenda. So, been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And this now brings us to citizen input. This is an opportunity for visitors to address the Urban Renewal Agency on items that are not on the agenda.
Sure. We might want to just ask if they have anybody that wants to speak if they...
You don't want to hear the whole spiel?
You can certainly do it. I'm not trying to...
Well...
...speak anymore, but if you don't want to, is there anybody on Zoom?
You've heard my voice is a little rough.
Right comment? Then I don't think you need to read it.
Okay. We will move on then to the consent agenda. Can the city attorney please read the titles of the consent agenda into the record?
Minutes of the May 15, 2023 Urban Renewal Agency meeting.
Aren't we supposed to do that before we approve the consent agenda?
Oh, no, because she's just reading the titles in.
Okay.
And it is the minutes. And so, I'm curious if we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Council President Ackerval, I, member, no, Vice Chair Ackerval...
Call me Kristen. It's fine, we'll move along. It's fine.
I move to approve, what have I approved?
The consent agenda.
The consent agenda.
Excellent. And do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as read. And I ask all in favor to please say aye.
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 Motion passes four to zero, which now brings us to the public hearing. And I'll ask for the city attorneys, sorry, to please read the title of the URA Resolution Number 343 into the record.
URA Resolution Number 343, a resolution of the Urban Renewal Agency of the City of Wilsonville adopting the budget-making appropriations and declaring the intent to collect tax increment for fiscal year 2023-24.
Thank you. I'll be like one of those infomercial people. We'll say, we'll get through this yet. So, I call to order the Wilsonville Urban Renewal Public Hearing on Resolution 343. Ladies and gentlemen, the Urban Renewal Agency will be taking public testimony tonight at this public hearing. The hearing will be conducted in the following manner. First, staff will present their report. Second, testimony will be asked by those who wish to testify. Third, agency will consider a motion for each resolution separately. This meeting is being held in person and remotely by Zoom. If you are listening to this meeting remotely, when the time for public testimony is called, please use the raise hand feature on Zoom or press star nine on your telephone if you would like to testify. If you're having difficulties with these instructions, you may call the number shown on the screen and enter the webinar ID number shown on the screen when prompted. When called up to testify, state your full name and address for the record. I request from those providing testimony not to repeat testimony that has already been given to the agency, simply indicating that you agree with a prior testimony given by the speaker that you identify is sufficient. Thank you. And now, staff will present their report.
Hello, I'm Keith Katko. I'm the city's Finance Director, and tonight we have the discussion on the budget for the Urban Renewal Agency. Again, we have one agency and four plans. This is a very high-level overview because, of course, we went over this in greater detail during the Budget Committee meetings, and it's also detailed in the budget book available online as well. The total budget for the combined four plans is $23,489,759, truncated there at 23.5. The column in the green summarizes the totals of each plan. Just a couple of things to point out. In the Year 2000 Plan, we're done collecting tax increment, so that's zeroed out. There's still a little bit of a budget, there's some investment income, and of course, the capital project is the Beckman-Dip Bridge project that will use up those remaining funds for that project. And then, in the subsequent years, depending on how quick that capital project gets completed, we won't have any more budget for any of the related Year 2000. The West Side tax increment, you'll notice, is at 1.7 million. Historically, that has been set at five, or capped at 5 million tax increment, but we're getting pretty close to paying off all the remaining debt, and we have reached the tax, the maximum indebtedness in that plan as well. So, next year, we'll collect the 1.7. That will be it at the end of next year, and we'll be able to turn that tax increment off. And then, that gets turned back to the taxing jurisdictions in the area. Coffee Creek is just getting started, or we're just getting more and more increment off that plan area. And the other one of note is the new wind program, Urban Renewal District, and expecting about $750,000 in tax increment on that. Other than that, that is the collective budget for the Urban Renewal. And again, we kind of went through this at the Budget Committee meetings as well. So, with that, that would be the presentation, unless there's any specific questions.
Do any of the Urban Renewal members have questions for staff? I'm not seeing any. Okay, is there anybody that is wishing to testify? And anybody online that's wishing to testify? Okay, then I assume no further questions and no further information from staff at this time. So, I hereby declare that this public hearing is closed at 9:14 PM. And that brings us to the next page. So, it is time for us to consider each resolution, and we just have one. Says that we're going to do them separately, but we will definitely do them separately because we just have one. So, we will consider Resolution Number 343 first and only. Do I have a motion to approve Resolution Number 343?
Vice Chair Ackerval.
Sure.
I move to approve Urban Renewal Agency Resolution Number 343.
Do I need to read it? Nope. That works. Do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there, to approve Resolution Number 343, and is there any discussion? Then, hearing no discussion or commentary, I'll go ahead and call for the vote on the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. The motion passes four to zero. And that brings us to the end. So, I hereby declare the Urban Renewal Agency meeting adjourned at 9:15 PM. Thank you.